5:45 PM, so I will call to order the Thursday, April 3rd, 2025, regular meeting of Hendersonville City Council. We begin our meeting with a silent invocation for people to pray or meditate as they choose, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Good work. Thank you. You'll join me in the pledge.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have public comment time, and this evening we have two people signed up to speak in person. Is there anyone online seeking recognition to also speak?
No, Madam Mayor.
If you could limit it to about five minutes, we would appreciate it. And come to the lectern in the center and give your name and address for the clerk's record. First of all, Glenn Lang.
Glenn Lang, 625 Fern Cliff here in Hendersonville. As most of you know, I'm a member of the Tree Board for Hendersonville, and we would like to take this little bit of opportunity here to advertise our Bradford Pear Bounty Day, which is coming up on Saturday, April 12th. They even gave me the T-shirt. And so we want to encourage you to cut down those Bradford pears, even though they look nice. Many people like them, that's the reason they're being planted, but they're a tree that's devastating to our natural environment. So we're encouraging people to cut them down, take a photo of it, register online. All the information is on the city's website. To do that, we'll give you a free native tree to put in its place, and that's up to five. If you cut down five Bradford pear, we'll give you five new trees to plant. And that's coming up. You need to register, get those saws and those teen saws going, and cut down Bradford pears, and we'll give you some free trees for your trouble. I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Thank you, you and the Tree Board. Katie Gash.
Good evening. My name is Katie Gash, and my address is 705 Secoe Drive here in Hendersonville. I pastor with my husband at Speak Life Community Churches at 401st Avenue West. So there, council members, my name is Katie Gash, and I am a resident of Henderson County. Born in Barbados, I moved here with my husband Eric Gash and our three children in 2008. We pastor a small church right here in downtown Hendersonville, over on 1st Avenue West. I became a school teacher, he became a principal at his old elementary school, and together we have done our best to be positive lights in this community. But I will tell you, as a public school teacher, as a green card immigrant, and as a woman of color, I have never felt more maligned, discouraged, or dehumanized. I have never felt the heaviness in my heart and the weight upon my shoulders that I do right now. The vision statement for the city of Hendersonville says that we are a vibrant mountain community where the government and the citizens work together for a high quality of living. And our mission statement says that we are committed to providing quality, efficient services to all through open conversation, timely responses, and quality results. But with the current direction that our national government has taken us in, with the timid way that so many feel forced to toe the line instead of speaking up for what is right, I am truly concerned. And so I echo, I'm inspired by, and I echo Senator Cory Booker. In these few minutes that I have before you, I rise today because our nation is in crisis. Bad rock commitments are being broken. Unnecessary hardships are being borne by Americans of all backgrounds. These are not normal times in our nation, and they should not be treated as such. The threats to the American people and American democracy are grave and urgent, and we all must do more to stand against them. Generations from now will look back at this moment and have a single question, where were you? When prices at the grocery store were skyrocketing, and the stock market was plunging, and Americans were hurting and looking for help? When the president tried to take health care away from people with disabilities? When he gutted public education, fired thousands of veterans who risked their lives for this country? When he abandoned financial commitments at a time when floods, fires, hurricanes, and droughts are devastating communities across our country and right here in Henderson County? This is not right. This is not who we are. But did we speak up? I rise today. To be silent at this moment of local and national crisis would be a betrayal, and because at stake in this moment is nothing less than anything that makes us who we are, everything that makes us who we are. So I am speaking up. My teacher heart breaks to see these policy decisions that are coming from the top. Our students deserve better, our teachers deserve better, our public schools deserve better, and our families deserve better. We can't just hope for the best, or just wait and see, or smile and pretend it to work. These are our children, and they deserve our wholehearted protection. We should not have to make speeches like this. We should not have to protest, and advocate, and march, and write letters, and make demands as we are having to do. But here we are, rising with the intention of getting into some good trouble, rising because we believe sincerely that our country, our city, is in crisis. I just came from a Zoom call with teachers throughout the state who are worried, worried, because federal funds to our Head Start program, our early childhood education program for low-income families stand under threat. So I am speaking up, and I'm asking you to do all that you can. I know that in many respects our hands are tied. I understand that there's a domino effect, and I understand that our federal funds are really, really important. I understand. And so therefore, I just ask that you do all that you can through the power of your elected position to advocate on our behalf. Thank you.
First item of business is consideration of the agenda. Is there any things we'd like to have added to or removed from the agenda?
I would like for us to have a moment, silent prayer from Mr. Roger Snyder, the Mills River that expired. Would that be possible?
Do you want to do that now? Thank you. Mr. Snyder was a character, but totally dedicated to his community. Thank you. If there are no changes to the agenda, if we can have a motion to approve.
Madam Mayor, would the City Council approve the agenda as presented?
Is there any discussion? Those in favor of the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it. We have our agenda. Consent agenda, is there anything anyone would like to have moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda to be discussed? Now, a motion to approve?
Madam Mayor, would the City Council approve the consent agenda as presented?
Is there any discussion? No. Those in favor of approving consent agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, and we have our consent agenda approved. So, jump down to presentations. First is our annual Environmental Sustainability Board Sustainability Hero Award recognition.
Thank you. Thank you, City Council staff members, for supporting the Environmental Sustainability Board and all that we do. And I want to take a brief moment to invite all of you to the Hendo Earth Fest, which is two weeks from Saturday, April 19th, from 10 to 3 on South Main Street. You can learn what the organizations and others are doing to protect our environment, and also what you can do in your own home. Hope to see you there. I want to also mention, I watched the presentation last week on special events, and it's so apparent what the city does to support these in so many ways. I learned a lot, and I appreciate that very much. So tonight, I have the privilege of serving as chair of the city's Environmental Sustainability Board, and I'm here on behalf of our board to present the third annual Hendersonville Sustainability Hero Award. Sustainability is one of the city's core values. We felt it was important that each year we honor a city employee or team that has been a champion for change and has been responsible in the development and implementation of the sustainable practices in the city of Hendersonville. This year's recipient has exemplified all the qualities and characteristics of a sustainability hero, and tonight we would like to celebrate this team's outstanding achievement in leadership, innovation, and service to the community as it relates to helping preserve our community for future generations. That's why I'm on the board, because I'm doing it for my grandkids. This past year was an especially challenging one with the devastation from Hurricane Helene. Now more than ever, we are reminded just how important sustainability and environmental practices are for reducing the impacts of natural disasters. For the 2025 Sustainability Hero, we would like to recognize a department that has shown a longstanding record of prioritizing sustainability in all areas of operation, including water conservation, waste reduction, and operational resiliency. Some of this department's accomplishments include the following: restoring clean drinking water in just over two weeks to 100% of customers after Helene; prioritizing integrative infrastructure improvements that use stormwater and erosion control measures; creating the Mountains on Tap program to encourage drinking tap water some of the best ever; and reducing single-use plastics; implementing a water treatment facility-wide recycling program; and initiating a bio-salads thermal dryer facility, which is estimated to reduce bio-salad landfill waste by over 60% and save the city a lot of money. I would also like to highlight efforts of specific water and sewer staff members, Stephen Bell, Bo Stapp, Damian Bingham, and Chase Doughty. Bo Stapp, Damian, and Chase Doughty, these water and sewer maintenance workers initiated stream restoration practices to repair eroding stream banks to protect sewer infrastructure, including recontouring the storm, the stream bank, and planting native vegetation. This crew could easily have used other measures, more prone to failing, but instead took the initiative to create a long-lasting integrated remedy that certainly proved effective when Hurricane Helene hit. Stephen Bell, laboratory supervisor, took the initiative to start a recycling program at the water treatment facility, which he currently maintains, while educating staff members on the importance of waste reduction. This has led to staff members carrying over efforts of waste reduction in their own lives, yea, which is directly aligned with the mission of the Environmental Sustainability Board. This department and staff consistently works to improve our environment, engage community members, and lead by example. The third annual Sustainability Hero Award goes to the city of Hendersonville's Water and Sewer Department and Utility Director, Adam Stewart.
Thanks, guys. This is a hard secret to keep.
All right.
You gotta get all the way in, guys.
All right, guys, thank you for being here.
All right, y'all ready? One, two, three, I'm gonna take a couple. Awesome, congratulations.
Thank you. Chase, good to meet you.
Steven.
Steven, thank you so much.
Damian.
Damian, thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay. Thank you. They put in a lot of, a lot of work, and we do appreciate everything that they've done. Next, we have a presentation from the Food Connection.
My name is Marisha McMoran. I'm Executive Director of Food Connection. I just want to thank Madam Mayor and council members for having us here to present. I am continually impressed by Hendersonville's sustainability efforts and its Food Connections mission to join you in those efforts to create an even more sustainable community in Henderson County. Food Connection was born in Asheville, North Carolina, in 2014 in response to all of the surplus food that ends up in the landfill after catering events, conference centers, retirement homes, institutions like universities and hospitals. It is estimated that up to 40% of all food produced in the United States ends up in the landfill and never has the opportunity to be consumed. So for most folks, that's like buying three bags of groceries at the grocery store and just dropping one in the parking lot on your way home. The EPA's food waste reduction strategy says the first thing we should do is try to prevent food waste at home, as you were speaking about, and the very next thing that we should do is donate or upcycle, preferably to people in need, which is exactly what Food Connection does. We know that compost is also a great alternative to throwing your surplus food into the trash, however, that is a little further down on the EPA's recommendations. Food Connection partners with over 30 food donor partners, including The Grove Park Inn, UNC Asheville, Mission Hospital, Ridgecrest Conference Center, and as a matter of fact, this is a picture of volunteers at Ridgecrest Conference Center picking up more than 800 pounds of food in one single trip. We were there three times the same exact week. So what Food Connection does with that food is we share it with our neighbors in need. One of the biggest barriers or points of education that we do with our food donor partners is we hear, "We can't donate the food because it's a liability. If somebody gets sick, I could go out of business." When in fact, the Bill Emerson Good Samaritan Food Donation Act was passed in 1996 during the Clinton administration, and it provides federal liability protection to any business donating in good faith, using proper food safety handling to donate it to a nonprofit in need. We have two different programs. Our flagship program is where we take bulk foods, like bulk pans of food, like you saw in that picture, and we take it to agencies who serve the community directly, like the rescue mission, faith-based organizations, welcome tables, open tables, shelters for our unhoused neighbors. This is really important for our agency partners because it helps not only to feed people, but it helps to free up their critical dollars, their funding for other critical programs like recovery, mental health, housing, transportation. Our other program, when we had so much food in Buncombe County that we filled up everybody's refrigerators and everybody's freezers at all of our agency partners, we still had thousands of pounds of food left. Launched in 2021, we did a pilot program, launched full in 2022, an innovative, first-of-its-kind in the country model where we repackage the food into individual heat-and-serve meals, nutritionally balanced with a protein, a starch, and a veggie. In this picture right here are actual crab cakes from The Grove Park Inn that we then distribute to the community, free of charge with no questions asked. Food insecurity rates in western North Carolina are increasing day by day, and as many as 30% of the folks in western North Carolina identified as food insecure do not qualify for food assistance for various reasons. When you come to Food Connection for a meal, we don't ask your age, your gender, your zip code, your income. We only ask if you want the steak, the pulled pork, or a vegetarian meal. We partner, we have several different programs that we partner with, after-school programs, early childhood learning, and we have a Beyond the Bus Line program in Buncombe County that gets meals beyond where the bus line serves into our rural communities that face transportation barriers and access to prepared food. So since our inception, our first full year in 2015, we rescued and redistributed 10,000 meals. Last year, we rescued and redistributed almost 187,000 meals. These are a sampling of our food donor partners and our food recipient partners that receive the food in bulk, and these are all of the mobile meals distribution. In the aftermath of Helene, our numbers went from about 3,000 meals a week to about 12,000 meals a week. And when we had awesome organizations like World Central Kitchen, who were serving 25,000 meals a day in western North Carolina, at the end of the day, guess what happened? They had leftover food, and they called Food Connection, and we made sure that it made it into a hungry belly. So our environmental impact beyond keeping food out of the landfill is we compost everything that we can't use, maintaining the utmost food safety standards, we have pan recycling, and we also take, if a restaurant changes their packaging, we'll rescue their to-go containers and find an agency who can use them. In 2024 alone, we kept 160,000 pounds of food out of the Buncombe County landfill. Food rotting in the landfill produces methane gas, which is more potent than carbon dioxide. The equivalent to the food we kept out of the landfill last year is the same as 481,000 miles driven by a gas-powered vehicle. So we are coming to Hendersonville. So this year is a big year for us. We have identified a lot of opportunity to rescue food through conference centers, retirement communities, catering companies, and institutions, and we are asking for the City Council and for the citizens of residents of Henderson County to join us on our mission to reduce food waste and to ease hunger in Henderson County. We have just gotten this really awesome trailer that we use as a drop-off point. We are partnering with St. James Episcopal Church right on Main Street, and there is a number lock on the outside that we share with our trusted partners, because sometimes catering get done at 10 o'clock at night, and we don't have staff on. They could drop it off, send us a text message, we can call Lynette back on track Addiction Ministries, and she can come and pick up what she needs to feed her clients the next day. So this time, the trailer is being installed, we've got volunteers lined up to help us move food, we have our recipient partners onboard as well, and we are now connecting with conference centers, summer camps. Even just from one summer camp, the last two summers, Gwin Valley, outside of Brevard, we were able to rescue more than 2,000 pounds of food and redirect that to agencies in Henderson County. So we ask anybody who's interested, you can find us online, reach out to us directly. Please, if you know somebody who works in food and beverage, who works in a kitchen, a conference center, or a hospital, share with us, share our information with them. And also for businesses, it is a tax, it's a tax write-off as a charitable contribution. You value the, we keep track of every pound of food we rescue and where it ended up, and then you work with your accountant to assign a value to that food, and so it's a win for the environment, it's a win for the people, and it can be a win for your pocketbook if you have surplus food. Take questions or no? Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Mayor McMoran.
Very impressive.
Yeah. Look forward to seeing you in operations soon.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Next, we have recognition of Trey Laws for graduating from the FBI National Academy.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Player My Hand Police Chief, to my left here is Captain Trey Laws. He is our patrol commander, and so I want to take this opportunity to tell you about the accomplishment that he just completed and let everybody kind of know the significance of this. So Trey just graduated from the FBI National Academy, and so the National Academy is a 90-year-old program started in 1935 by then-director J. Edgar Hoover to professionalize law enforcement around the country. And so the program has grown today to about 1,000 law enforcement leaders from around the world. Most of those are domestic, but there's about 10% of the class that comes from international partners from all over the world, and Trey can kind of tell you where all the countries that some of his students came, you know, were from that attended his class. But this is a leadership, executive leadership development course at Quantico. So Captain Laws left his beautiful wife and kids for 10 weeks and stayed in Quantico in the barracks there on the grounds of the FBI Academy and learned a myriad, it's like going to college. It literally is going to college. In fact, he, all the classes that he took were graduate-level classes, and so he, you know, now is accredited through the University of Virginia. He picked the courses that he wanted to go to. It's a very unique opportunity. He joins only John Nicholson, Donnie Parks, and myself as graduates of the National Academy. And so we did the math today, so in 90 years since the program started. Now, the first classes were only 15 or 20 people, right? But about 56,000 leaders have completed this program in the last 90 years, and that equates to about 0.2% of all of law enforcement ever gets an opportunity to go to the National Academy. So it is a very, it's a highly competitive, very prestigious program to be able to get into, and so I'm glad in six months, I'm gonna come before you again, because we're gonna have another graduate of that class. So I was, I cashed in all the credit that I had to make this happen, but it was, it was very important. When I came here four years ago, John and I talked about our vision for the department and what we wanted, and one of those things was really developing the personnel that we have here, really, you know, encouraging leadership development. That was something that was lacking, and so this is the most prestigious leadership program in law enforcement. So I'm very excited that Captain Laws was able to go and attend, and so I'll give him an opportunity to show his appreciation to the council. And so this, this program, I want everybody to understand, this is, to send him costs $50,000. Didn't cost us $50,000. It cost, the federal government paid for this program completely at zero cost to the municipality, but that's how expensive it is. He lived there, he ate there, world-class instructors. It's a tremendous opportunity that, you know, we got for free, so. But I'll let, Madam Mayor, you present the certificate in a minute, but Trey, would you like to?
Yeah, I just, I want to thank the mayor and the council for their commitment to professional development within the city. You know, it's not just me, it goes through our whole agency that we were pursuing that path. I want to thank Manager Connet and the chief and Brian for allowing me to take 10 weeks away from my regular duties. I owe a lot to my coworkers for picking up my slack while I was gone. I'll be paying for that for a good while, but, I mean, I probably owe the most to my wife for picking up everything at home and taking care of the kids while I was gone. So again, just thank, thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity to go do things like I just got to go do, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, the director has already given Captain Laws this certificate, but if the council wants to present it to Trey, maybe we get a picture of everybody together?
Yeah. We're all proud of you, so we'll all come up.
One, two, three. Family, come on.
Oh, yeah, we need a family.
One, two, three.
Thank you. Next, we have an HR presentation.
Mayor Volker, City Council. I'd like to bring our HR team up. Our HR team will come to the podium. All right. So the agenda says we're going to talk about the performance system update. However, I want to talk about something a little different. I want to recognize Luanne Welter, who is, I'm going to read a list of things that Luanne has done. As the public player, man, I know Luanne has been with us for 25 years. She is retiring at the end of May, and she's happy about that. Luanne has been one of the most valuable teammates that we have, and I have enjoyed my 12 years with her and really appreciate the job she's done for our community and our city. Some of the things that Luanne has been responsible for is our Service Excellence Program, Employee Orientation Wellness Committee, our great Turkey Trot every Thanksgiving. Active in a previous role with the Historic Preservation Commission, identifying structures, also responsible for the Tour of Homes, Historic Tour of Homes. She's the unofficial city historian, developed our COA program, Hendovation, Ask Me Safety Program along with Steve, helped chair the 175th City of Hendersonville Anniversary, Shred Day Drug Takeback Events. She advocated for the new Public Works Maintenance Facility at Patton Park, started the Safety Committee, key player in obtaining the Wellness Clinic. You know, she was the one that went to the party and did that, took the lead, arranged the Berkeley Park dedication, was made a historic landmark. She received an MVP from Dan Barber for her work at Berkeley Park. I mean, this list goes on and on and on. Helped lead the Fire Department for their SHARP certification. She holds the Environmental Safety and Health Certificate, Public Safety Manager of Environmental Safety and Health Certificate, Work Zone Instructor, managed our Workers' Comp Program, started the hiking series, helped create the employee internet. You can see, I could just go on and on. Luanne has been a tremendous value to our community and to our organization, and we felt like it was appropriate to recognize her in a way. Tried to get her here with a surprise, and her husband Jim is here, who's been a tremendous support. So Mayor, if you will allow me, I will read a resolution that will take, will need a motion and approval to do this, but would like to recognize. Resolution by the City of Hendersonville City Council, naming the Service Excellence MVP Award after Luanne Welter. Whereas Luanne Welter has served the City of Hendersonville since January 2000, and she will be retiring on May 31, 2025. And whereas Luanne Welter has served the City of Hendersonville in a variety of full and part-time capacities over the past 25 years. And whereas during Luanne's time, she has been responsible for the development and implementation of the following programs and activities: Tour of Historic Homes, Historic District Banner Program, Employee Wellness Program, Service Excellence Program, New Employee Performance Evaluation Program, Annual Turkey Trot 5K Race, City of Hendersonville Academy, the city's current Safety Program, Employee Wellness Clinic, plus many more. And whereas Luanne Welter has been a dedicated teammate and improved the quality of life for the City of Hendersonville team and the citizens we serve. And whereas Luanne Welter's leadership and work ethic will be greatly missed by the City of Hendersonville, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hendersonville, North Carolina, that the Service Excellence MVP Award be renamed the Luanne Welter Service Excellence MVP of the Year Award, adopted by the City Council of the City of Hendersonville, North Carolina, on this third day of April 2025.
Council members, you've heard the resolution. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, say no. Better not say no. The rest of HR up here.
Sure.
And Jim?
Everyone get up here. You want in the middle?
Go in the middle, Luanne.
There are five, so.
Perfect. It's evenly balanced. One, two, three. Awesome.
Jim, you want to come up? Want to say anything?
Oh, yeah. I'd like to thank the academy. I started on a snowy night in Oak Hill, West Virginia.
I'm going to stand here?
No, just kidding. Anyway, I'd like to thank you all. It's been wonderful, for the most part, 25 years. Going out with Oracle definitely reinforced that it was time to go. But no, I would like to thank, this is a city that appreciates innovation. They let you kind of fly when you want to fly. I started with Chris Carter, as a couple of us did, and then moved on. And I think John Connet's the best city manager we've, we've had in my tenure here. So it's, it's a wonderful place to work. Been really blessed with all of you that I've gotten to know, and I appreciate all the work. The other employees, my coworkers, are fantastic. And like I said, it's just a place that you can really do good things, you can come up with an idea, and for the most part, they'll say, oh, yeah, let's do it. And so that's what I appreciate one of the most thanks for. It's a beautiful downtown. I love living in a city. He forgot to mention, I am the unofficial mayor of Hyman Heights, but.
I didn't forget, I just didn't do it.
No, I've enjoyed very much everything that I've been able to do with the city, and I thank you all very much for this honor. Hope we're going out to dinner.
All right, that's the fun stuff. Now we get to the public affairs. First is a rezoning, a conditional zoning district. First Avenue Villas.
Good evening, everyone. So I'll be presenting on the First Avenue Villas project. The city is in receipt of a rezoning for a property on First Avenue to urban residential conditional zoning district. Many of you have heard a version of this project before, so I'm going to try and keep this a little high level, give you the details, and then, of course, can answer any questions you might have. So the property is located on First Avenue West. The applicant is Peacock Architects, and Ari Development LLC is the property owner. The property is currently zoned central mixed-use CZD. It's 0.57 acres, and the proposal consists of 12 units of residential multifamily. We had our neighborhood compatibility meeting on December 12, 2024. The topics discussed included dimensions of the building, protecting of the existing trees, buffering between the properties, parking for delivery trucks, and the location of the three parking areas associated with the project. Here are some photos of the property, the subject property. So in the upper left-hand corner, you can see, looking from First Avenue onto the property, the upper right-hand corner is looking the opposite way towards the church that's across the street. The lower left-hand corner is looking east to, kind of towards downtown on the property, and then the lower right-hand corner is looking the opposite way, looking west. So these are some structures in the surrounding neighborhood. So I will talk about the new plan for this project. It is now two stories tall, so highlight some of the other buildings in the area that also are two stories tall. Previously, this, this property has been through a lot in the past few years, so there have been several rezonings or attempted rezonings. The most recent in November 2024 was a conditional rezoning request, which City Council denied for 16 units at three stories tall. So here is the updated site plan. Many of the things from that previous rezoning that was denied are similar on this project. So the footprint, the building footprint is still 4,810 square feet per building for each of those buildings. The units are two to three bedrooms each. There's the centrally-located vehicular access point on the property, and there are 12 parking spaces provided on the site. There are 13 street parking spaces proposed, and then there are an additional 25 proposed on another property, so not on this property and not on the street. These are the street spaces, those are the 13 street spaces that are across the street from, or on the other side of the street from the First Avenue project. So this is the updated two-story design. So you can see they lowered it a story. Another thing I wanted to mention is they've altered the design a little bit on the first floor level. So there used to be patios that were along those first floor levels. They've removed the patios and just have an entry door there, which staff actually feels is more compatible with the design elements of this zoning district. Here's another rendering of the rear of the property and the interior. So the developer has proposed several conditions, so I'm going to read each of these and can answer any questions. But the first one is the developer to pay a fee in lieu of a seven-foot sidewalk in accordance with, with Section 6-12-3 and Section 5-25-5.15 of the zoning code. The second is the developer requests to be granted relief to provide a 12-foot front setback instead of a 14-foot front setback required per Section 5-25-4 of the zoning code. The third, the developer requests a waiver of the TIA requirement, which is a requirement of the urban residential zoning district, so the developer's asking to waive that. The fourth, within the center driveway accessing the site, the developer shall install a differentiated material for the outer five foot, five feet along the building edges to establish a pedestrian zone and distinguish it from the primary drive lane. This will achieve the goal and intent of 5-25-5.13. The fifth, the sidewalks leading to the front porches on the front facade shall extend to the street edge. This will achieve the goal and intent of 5-25-5.15. And then the sixth, the developer shall attempt to preserve all existing non-invasive vegetation within the proposed Type A buffer along the eastern side of the property. The existing vegetation will be allowed to, to be used as credits towards the required buffer plantings. Additionally, if any of those trees are not able to be protected by the standards in 15-4D, then the developer agrees to replace them at a rate specified in 15-4B if any of those trees die within the 10 years post-construction. And so this is just kind of showing some of those conditions. So this is that buffer, so they would maintain that buffer. You can see the image on the right-hand side, maintain those trees, removing any non-invasive species that are in there. And then down here, this is just showing the extension of the sidewalks to the, the street edge. And then that was the differentiated material within that center drive aisle. So it's not creating a sidewalk, but it's at least differentiating where someone should walk and then cars should drive. So this is in the downtown future land use area. We found it to be consistent with the, the description of that area. The current zoning is CMU CZD. It's surrounded on some sides by CMU CZD. The other zoning districts in the vicinity are C1 and R6. And then just generally, this was all included in your packet, but we found it to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and the general rezoning standards. And so here is a draft comprehensive plan consistency statement and then a draft reasonable statement rationale for approval or denial, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions? All right, thank you. Does the property owner or developer want to make any comments?
Just briefly, Madam Mayor, council members, thank you. My name's Brian Golden. I'm an attorney at the Ann Winkle Law Firm here in Hendersonville, North Carolina. I will try to keep it brief, because four out of five of you have heard this before. And I thank Councilmember Hensley, thank you for that, the vote the last time. But I think the, the concern was three stories and the privacy issues that related with that top story. Now, under this, this new zoning classification that we're asking for, we've reduced it. I think we've fixed the front issue that Sam told us about, that you all had concerns with. All of those proposed conditions were worked through with the planning board. They had a favorable recommendation. They appreciated all those concerns. We're going from, unfortunately, from my perspective, we're going from those 16 units down to 12, so we're not fulfilling all of the needs of the, of the housing stock. But I think what it does do is it addresses all the concerns that the council members have. It's a great infill development property. It's right there on, on the outside edge of that downtown core area. It's going to be close to the Acusta Trail. It's in walking distance of just about everything, including a library, which is good. We do have, I know that when we talked to planning board, there was some questions about parking. The minimum requirements for those 12 units are 12 parking spaces. They are all onsite, so there's 12 parking spaces all on the back with a handicapped site in the back. We are going to paint new spaces on First Avenue out front, so there'll be an additional, I think it's 13, new spaces. And we also have a letter of intent from the church across the street to lease us long-term through a licensing agreement, 25 additional spaces. So that, that's a significant number of spaces for 12 units. I wish it was 16 units, but unfortunately, it's 12 at this time. So unless there's any other questions, the architect's here, Mr. Rafiq Shirani is here. He is the owner and the developer. But you all have seen it, it's minor changes. We, we wanted to differentiate the color of the sidewalk in that main corridor, so people would know for safety reasons, where they would know where to walk. Enough turnaround room for emergency services vehicles. In the back, we're maintaining all those buffers, and Sam said we're going to cut out the non-invasive species. And I think what we're going to do is cut out the invasive species in those buffers. So just to let you know, we're not taking down any non-invasive species.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Right. Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes, Mayor, have.
We will open that public hearing. We have one person signed up in person to speak, Mr. Fitch.
Ken Fitch, 1046 Patton Street. A previous version of the plans for this project was rejected by the former city council in November. The issues of concern included the size of the buildings, especially for a relatively small parcel, the incompatibility with the historic neighborhood, and it is a neighborhood, the potential loss of distinctive canopy trees, a defining element of the neighborhood, and parking and traffic issues. The project parcel is located in between two historic homes. Maple Grove on the east side of Washington Street is one of the city's anchoring historic properties dating to 1882 and is depicted in one of the oldest photographs of the city, often cited by Tom Orr. Maple Grove is an anchoring property for the neighborhood and also for the row of historic buildings on Washington Street that represent a showcase of Hendersonville's historic architecture. Indeed, Councilmember Simpson has noted that Washington Street does present a boundary between the historic residential neighborhoods and the civic commercial downtown, a distinction she has promulgated since the beginning of her tenure. The project parcel itself is important as a gateway element to the neighborhood with its park-like aspect and canopy trees visible from far down the street. This neighborhood is rich in its wealth of oral histories and interconnections. There are residents who can rapidly reel off accounts of who lived where and when and whose mother was born in what house. and whose mother was born in what house, along with other accounts that you have heard previously, all contributing to a history that calls for preservation and celebration. But this is a neighborhood that functions as an interconnected network of community, where, as you heard previously, neighborhoods advocated with concern for the family who lives in the historic home on the west side of the project. The trees, in addition to their signal presence in the neighborhood, also provide an essential buffering element between the Maple Grove property and the project parcel. For this current process, it is important to record that there was an important neighborhood compatibility meeting for this newest phase of the project. And it was a very productive meeting with positive dialogue, interaction, suggestions, questions, and answers. And Rafiq was earnest in his outreach to the neighborhood for suggestions, asking what he could do for the neighborhood, what do they want from this project. I found him to be genuine and sincere, and I commend him for that. The project in this new plan would remove the third floor of the buildings and plant a row of canopy trees as a buffer with the box property on the west side, which was a major concern for the neighbors. We assured, we were assured that measures would be taken to prevent damage to the preserved trees on the east side. I asked if he would agree to a condition to replace the existing trees designated for preservation should they die at a future time, and he agreed that would be no problem. This being important, as we understood that the ownership might shift possibly to an HOA and future owners would be bound to that condition. The only unfortunate thing about this productive meeting is that it took place in the afternoon, 2:00 PM, so that many of the workforce residents could not attend the meeting. However, at the next meeting in the process, in a disappointing preservation, the attorney presented are somewhat different aspects, citing the benefits of the proximity to the downtown core, the Acusta Trail, and all of the visionary language in the comp plan. The problem is, when you invoke this language and apply it to this historic neighborhood, it quickly becomes code language for gentrification, which is something the neighborhood firmly rejects, and it remains a major concern. Unfortunately, at this meeting, much of Rafiq's conciliatory approach was absent, and it was much missed. Regarding the condition to replace any trees designated for preservation, it was bluntly reduced to a five-year term, not a commitment to a continued preservation. In the packet, the term is now 10 years. But this seems paltry when we consider that the Waldrop family has been stewards of that historic home for over 100 years and is now undertaking interior measures to last another 100 years. However, in all this, there is one serious issue of concern, and that is the lack of clarity over the trees to be preserved. The Waldrop Youngblood family has repeatedly requested that the trees for preservation be staked or tagged to determine exactly which trees remain. After all these months, this has not taken place. There are over 20 trees on that buffering border, but only seven will remain. If you look at the photo in the packet, the question is which and how many of those trees in that photo would remain? Will there be one or two at that location from that view? Will there be a functioning buffer of any substantial elevation at that location? The family has requested that clarity to ensure that there is indeed a suitable buffering element. It is a specific but major issue that should be resolved before moving forward, as this will have a lasting impact on this historic property. Yes, this is a small project, a small parcel in the city, but a decision here will speak to how we regard our history, our heritage, and future. The other day, I passed by the site, and suddenly there was a flash of red. It was a cardinal, darting from bush to bush, branch to branch. And then I noticed the banner in the yard of the box property, which said, "When cardinals appear, angels are near. Let's not chase away the cardinals and the angels."
Thank you. Mr. Fitch, is there anyone online who wishes to speak?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. We will close that public hearing. Counsel, discussion or motion?
Excuse me, there is one here, Ms. Perez.
Oh, okay. If you want to call that person, please.
Helen Waldrup, you are unmuted.
Good evening. Helen Waldrup, Youngblood. And I've participated in a lot of these meetings through the process for this particular project. I appreciate Mr. Fitch's comments and also the fact that the developers tried to work through some of the process with the neighborhood in particular. I did remember, if I'm not mistaken, from the last planning commission meeting, that there was a request to the developer at least delineate that buffer out in the field so there's clarity from a survey perspective. And I don't believe that it's been done yet. That would be very helpful, I think, to the neighborhood in general. I also had a question for the planning staff in terms of opacity of the lower portion of the buffer and what that would actually look like. I know that if you're removing some of the invasives, a lot of that's like English ivy and things along those lines, which is killing the existing trees that are out there. But I also know and recognize that, if I'm not mistaken, there was an additional foot added to the buffer at the last meeting, if I was not mistaken from the plans that were originally being looked at. So clarity with respect to that and the fact that once you begin to do foundations, of course, on structures of that size, that can sort of inch into those particular areas. So I do think having that surveyed out in the field would be very helpful for the neighborhood in particular. I do appreciate the developer working through the process, which has taken a little bit of time, but made some significant changes that I think are bettering for the neighborhood in particular. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you. But then we'd like to mention what is included in the buffer.
Are you talking about the kinds of trees, the types of trees?
I think it's just a general information about what that type buffer it would include. Probably staff can cover that.
Yes, I can. I can clarify. So yeah, so they will have to meet our buffer requirements. But if they, so if they can meet that by preserving that buffer, then we will allow that. But if they remove things and then, you know, it doesn't meet our buffering requirement, then they would have to replant something to meet that requirement.
Okay. What would that type of buffer include, size of trees?
Yes, I might need to.
Okay.
Type A buffer.
Yeah, it's a, it's a Type A buffer. So it's eight feet minimum, and there's four canopy trees per 100 linear feet. And then there's 25 shrubs and evergreen shrubs and 33 flowering shrubs. Is that right?
That's a top base.
Yes, 20 and 25, right? Yeah, 20, 20 of the evergreen shrubs and 25 flowering shrubs.
Okay. So it's more than just the trees. There will be additional buffering lowered down.
Correct. But then they, the way it's stated now, that they're going to preserve all the existing non-invasive plants in there. So that would include trees and shrubs. And so they would use that as credits towards the required buffer. If they can't meet all of, if the credits don't meet all of the buffer planting requirements, then they would have to fill in any gaps. But otherwise, we don't want them to remove mature existing vegetation in order to meet our planting requirements, right? We'd rather preserve the mature trees.
Thank you.
So then, is it necessary for someone to go out and tag, like how Ken mentioned and Ms. Waldrop Youngblood mentioned? It doesn't seem necessary to tag anything because it sounds like we're going to try our best to preserve what's there.
Yeah, other than the non-invasive, I'm sorry, do you want to answer? We've done a plant survey of the trees and where they are so that the city would have an idea of what was existing there.
See if we tag this place, if we tag this place, it will be only visible to the person who is on site.
Right.
But if we did the study, now everything is marked on the paper. Everybody can see what exactly is where and what we're moving and what we are not moving.
Yep. Thank you.
And I will just clarify, because I think Ken mentioned, what is shown on the plan is only trees that are 12-inch DBH diameter at breast height or greater. And so it's not showing all of the trees that are out there. It's just showing those trees.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate the clarification. Right. Anyone else online? No.
Madam Mayor.
Okay. We'll close that public hearing now. Discussion or motion?
I'll do it. Madam Mayor, I move City Council adopted ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Hendersonville, changing the zoning designation of the subject property pinned 9568-77-1057. From CMU CZD, Central Mixed Use Conditional Zoning District, to URCZD, Urban Residential Conditional Zoning District, based on the site plan and list of conditions submitted by and agreed to by the applicant dated 4/1/2025 and presented at this meeting and subject to the following. One, the developer shall be consistent with the site plan, including the list of applicable conditions contained therein and the following permitted uses, residential multifamily, 12 units, 12 to two, two to three bedroom units. Man, I was doing so good. The petition is found to be consistent with the city of Hendersonville GEN-H 2045 Comprehensive Plan. Based on the information and from the staff analysis, and because the petition is consistent with a range of goals, guiding principles, and the future land use designation of Chapter Four of the GEN-H Comprehensive Plan, we find this petition to be reasonable and in the public interest based on the information from the staff analysis, public hearing, and because the petition incorporates a mix of housing types into an existing urban neighborhood. The petition provides an efficient use of property in the core of the city. The petition would place residents within an area of existing city services and infrastructure. The petition would place residents within walkable, bikeable proximity of a range of destinations, including employment, shopping, and recreation. The petition provides walkable neighborhood design characteristics, and the petition proposes to have a vibrant interface with the public realm.
Is there any discussion? Not? Those in favor of the conditional use zoning district rezoning, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
Okay. Mayor votes aye. The vote is four in favor, one against. Motion does carry, and the zoning change has been approved. All right. We'll wait a moment, let you all leave. Okay. The next public hearing is a zoning subdivision text amendment, flag lots and small lots.
Yes, good evening, City Council members, Madam Mayor. Good to see you all. Yes, we have a zoning text amendment that was initiated by an applicant to introduce a unique development opportunity and housing product. And so I'll give you those details as best I can, and I know there's a lot of technical code language involved with this. And so I'll try to do my best to paint a picture of what you are considering as we go through this. It affects both the zoning ordinance and the subdivision ordinance, many different articles within those two development standards. It is specifically targeting our residential zoning districts and MIC and RCT zoning districts. And I'll mention, the applicant is Barry Bialik with the Compact Cotages Group out of Asheville, and he's here this evening. I've seen him. And to get things started, I want to give some background and put some framework in place because of some of the many different understandings of affordable housing. I wanted to talk about that for a minute and talk about some terms. So the term affordable housing can mean many different things. In its most basic sense, it's an overarching or umbrella term that describes the crisis that we're facing across our region and in many parts of our country. The specific definition is a reference to housing units where the housing cost did not exceed 30% of the household's gross income. And because of this definition, the term often gets associated with subsidized housing as well. But other times, it may be describing a market rate housing, something that's non-subsidized. References to subsidized housing are technically referred to as low-income housing or very low-income housing. This refers to housing made available exclusively for households earning 80% of the area median income or less. For those households making up to 120% of the area median income, market rate housing solutions are typically referred to as attainable housing or workforce housing. Increasing the supply of that attainable housing is a critical component of the text amendment that you're going to consider this evening. It is, an important aspect of this is that it's intended to increase the supply of housing that is for sale. So the creation of lots that can be owned fee simple, individual ownership. This is in contrast to efforts that are maybe made to increase the supply of multifamily rental units. The targeted market for the reduced pole, flag lot, and small lot products will be for individuals, young couples, empty nesters, that, those type of market segmentations. In summary, this text amendment aims to fill a specific niche in the overarching goals to address affordable housing in that it aims to provide attainable for-sale homes. And so with that background, we'll get into, you know, some visualizations here of what's being proposed. So currently, what our standards allow, and I'm going to phrase that as what we are currently encouraging or incentivizing, is if you have an existing structure, we'll start with the right side of the screen. What can you do to increase revenue or maximize the opportunities on your parcel of land? Currently, you can add an 800-square-foot accessory dwelling unit. And so that's what you can do on an existing lot with an existing structure. On a vacant lot, you can, without having to construct a city street, you can build up to three lots off of a 45-foot-wide accessway. Those lots would have to meet the minimum lot size of the zoning district that they're in, and there would be no other limitations on the size of the dwelling that's constructed on them. And it would be, if it's only three lots, it's considered an exempt subdivision. If it goes above three lots, it would be, it would trigger into a minor subdivision. And to do this configuration here, if it was R15, which is our most prolific zoning district, you would need over an acre to be able to do this, to create these five lots. So let's look at what we're proposing here this evening. There's some visual examples on the left, sticking with the vacant lot. This scenario here is a very extreme example, showing the maximum utilization of a vacant lot under these proposed code revisions. In order to do this, this unique situation where there would be no streams, no existing utility easements, topography constraints, it would have to be accessible, you'd have to have access to gravity sewer. And so there's, so assuming all those things are overcome, then you could create up to six lots. That's the maximum number of lots you can subdivide. Those lots can be two, have to be a minimum of 2,000 square feet in size, and it is required that the dwelling or dwellings constructed on those lots are no greater than 1,200 square feet in gross floor area. So that 1,200 square feet in gross floor area is really the key that unlocks this new exception to the rule that allows this smaller lot size. So then with the smaller lot So then with the smaller lot size, we're, we're seeing a greater utilization of land. Um, and this is really intended to be an infill product. What I, on the right side, this is, if there's an existing lot with an existing home, uh, I think this is probably the more likely scenario. Um, under this scenario, it's a 20,000-square-foot lot zoned R15, so the, 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 the residual lot with the existing structure on it would have to maintain its 15,000-square-foot minimum lot size, but that leaves an extra 5,000 square feet that you could, uh, put a long skinny pole, um, up to the back and cut off another lot and build a 1,200-square-foot home on it, uh, and potentially sell that, um, as a, as a revenue generator and as a way to, um, to maximize, uh, your investment in, in property. So what this, you know, there's, there, I mentioned the target market, um, and how this, you know, really will present new opportunities for individuals, young couples, and empty nesters in particular, but it also presents new opportunities for, um, property owners and, and homeowners who can, uh, help the city in addressing our, our, our supply of attainable housing by becoming micro-developers. And that's a term that was actually in our comprehensive plan, but it's a way for us to address our housing needs in a dispersed fashion rather than relying on large-scale development to, uh, supply our housing. So this has been done in Durham. Here's an example, this is the pre-construction conditions on a lot. Uh, you can see the lot lines that were, um, that were, uh, were platted here. Um, this is, for context, a, a, a home across the street. Uh, this, under this example, you have the new homes that were constructed, um, the, you know, they basically ran out of width, so they couldn't get another pole in, so the, there's a very narrow, skinny, uh, deep lot. And so the rear of the lot remains untouched, and, and so that creates opportunities where you don't have, every house doesn't have to have a large yard, you can share some of the space that's, um, at the, at the rear, uh, in this example. And these homes were built, uh, they were sold, looks like this one up, upper right, room for rent, so maybe someone buys it. They have a, it's a two-bedroom, they have a room available, uh, they get a roommate, helps them pay their mortgage, and, uh, they start, uh, building equity in their home, uh, as opposed to just renting. Uh, and, uh, the one in the, in the bottom or the middle is Unit A, which is the third one from the street. So you can see little slivers of the home on the right and the home on the left, and that, those homes are oriented towards the driveway, the shared driveway that's coming to the rear. And that, this is a really good scenario of, of what we've written in our text, uh, to allow that. And so I am not gonna get in to all of the green words. Um, it's a lot, and it is very technical, but I think the illustrations show you what we are presenting. I will gladly answer any questions about that, but, um, I'm gonna skip through this and, um, highlight a couple of, of key things that have changed since your packet went out. Um, the first one is, so it, it, we, we're, we're attempting to close a loophole here, which, where someone might would do a series of subdivisions, exempt subdivisions, and create, uh, you know, small, you know, acre-sized lots, maybe they had three acres, they now have, um, three one-acre lots, and then they do essentially three of these reduced pole, flag lot subdivisions, each with six, and now all of a sudden they have 18 homes. Um, that was not what's intended. You would have to build a city street to be able to do that. And so to close that loophole, we had some language we had presented that was in your packet, but, uh, we are, uh, uh, proposing to revise that to just reference another section, existing section in our zoning code called aggregation, which essentially closes the loophole on that type of thing. If, it, it, it says if there's common ownership or common management or common, um, attributes, uh, that, um, would make these developments be considered one single development, and then, then it would be treated that way according to our standards. Uh, the other clarification is in regard to landscaping, uh, that, uh, in addition to street trees, at least one large maturing and one small maturing tree shall be planted or preserved on all lots established under these provisions. So the previous language was a little unclear, it said planted or preserved on the lot. So we're just, uh, cleaning that up a little bit. Um, other than that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave it for questions for this, um, but because of the technical nature of the, of the ordinance language. I will skip on ahead to, um, and I, I will mention that the language in the subdivision ordinance, for the most part, is, is very much duplicating what's in the zoning ordinance. Um, and that was, that was to cover, uh, both, uh, for exempt subdivisions and, uh, the nature of, of what's being proposed really fits in both of those, uh, two, um, development standards. So looking ahead at, uh, our, uh, committee, this went to the Legislative Committee, the Planning Board, and they, they, uh, concur, they had some good feedback and concurred, uh, primarily with the applicant and, uh, staff's assessment and input on this proposal. The, uh, Planning Board at a special-called meeting, um, recommended approval as presented, and, uh, then I'll, I'll move on into the comprehensive plan consistency. That's really our first criteria of the six to consider. Um, we found it to be very much consistent with the, the GEN-H plan, with the character area descriptions, um, and, uh, a number of guiding principles and goals. Uh, I will also note that, you may recall, the land supply was a, a major point of conversation, the analysis of the land supply in the city and how much land is underutilized, and, um, and then with that land supply, it was evaluated what it would be suitable for. A majority of that land was considered to be most suitable for residential development. So this is really a key way to better utilize that land, uh, in a way that's compatible, uh, with existing, uh, development. And, um, and as a tool for infill. And the, the, the three, uh, future land use or character area descriptions that this, this is primarily, um, aligning with or, or targeting, um, have references to this smaller lot size, allowing for, for smaller minimum lot sizes. The language in here talks about as it, as it being a trade-off for additional open space. I see that as a goal the city has is to, to increase open space. Another goal the city has is to have, uh, increased attainable housing. So in this case, we're exchanging minimum lot sizes, uh, smaller minimum lot sizes for, to help achieve a goal that the city has. And that's, uh, text is straight from the comprehensive plan. Uh, the, the land supply, the land area that these character areas or future land use ca- uh, designations cover is about 55% of the city's land area. And of course, that, that's a larger study area. If you look at our, our zoning jurisdiction, which is a little bit smaller, um, and, and you look at the zoning districts where this will be applicable, it totals, uh, almost 60% of the land, that this would be, um, permissible within, uh, just the R15 and the R20, uh, uh, total almost 50% of the land in the city. So, uh, again, it would either have to be a vacant parcel or a parcel with an existing home on it that has at least 2,000 square feet in excess of the minimum lot size for that zoning district. So it's not like every single one is gonna be eligible, um, but there, there will be, we think, some good opportunities for, for this to be dispersed, uh, through the city. Uh, the next criteria is, uh, existing, uh, no, I'm sorry, compatibility. And, uh, we reviewed the, uh, guiding principles and the goals of the comprehensive plan to help us understand this, and, uh, we find that the proposed amendment is compatible, given the provisions that allow for a mix of lot sizes while ensuring that new infill does not outscale existing homes by establishing a maximum square footage. That's something you see in a lot of, uh, communities where there's infill development, you get these large monolithic structures next, that are really out of character. These would be infill, but they would be small in size. And then it was consistent across the board, as you can see, with all the goals and guiding principles. I'm gonna, um, call out a couple of those. You can just look at the headings here of some of our guiding principles, compact development, missing middle housing, desirable and affordable housing. This is language straight from the comprehensive plan that is in alignment with what is proposed for you. Uh, the change condition is really about addressing the, the need for attainable homes. The, uh, public interest is increasing the housing stock, and expanded utilization of existing land, it provides benefits to those in need of housing, and also to property owners who can see a greater return on investment with their property. With public facilities, this is also a key point and a key distinction from other forms of new, new development, uh, that this, under this scenario, it would allow for a greater utilization of existing infrastructure. And in terms of the effect on, uh, the natural environment, there's a couple of things. The relaxed setbacks would allow for, um, the placement of the structure and hopefully in, in, uh, in shifting away from any, uh, mature vegetation that would, uh, be desired to be maintained, but then also the provision that, um, is required that you either preserve or plant a large and small maturing tree. The Planning Board, uh, found this to be consistent with the comprehensive plan, with the statement that says draft, but it was adopted by, and recommended by the Planning Board, uh, as presented on the screen. They al- also, uh, put forth the rationale for approval that are shown on the screen. Staff has drafted some rationale for denial for your consideration as well. And with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Any questions? Would the, um, petitioner like to make any comments?
I sent this to you.
Did you? I didn't get them. I didn't get them off here.
Oh, okay.
You'll have to wing it.
I'll wing it.
Yeah.
All right. Um, I'll be brief. Um. I guess I can really wing it. So, so let me start out by saying, um, that, you know, thank you. And, um, so I, I, I like to start off with the why. Like, so why I'm doing this is, um, I grew up in affordable housing. I, I grew up in the largest affordable housing development in New York City, um, and I went to nine different schools in eight years. And once I moved and got to stable housing, that was able to provide me the platform for where I am in life now and what I can do, and then the changes I can help make for others. Um, I chaired the Affordable Housing Committee for the City of Asheville for six years. Um, our company, so affordable housing and building workforce housing is a huge passion for me. I, I own a construction company, but I own the Thirsty Monk in Asheville, which employs people, and my goal as a construction company is to build housing that Thirsty Monk level people, level can afford. And if I can't do that, then I'm doing something wrong. So everything I do is, is in that favor. Um, so, uh, so with that, to create attainably priced housing, and we've built, so we've built 300 houses, workforce-level houses, in the City of Asheville without taking any funds from the city to do so. Uh, we've done that through creative zoning, through construction efficiencies. And so the levers you can pull for creating attainably priced housing are regulation and zoning, are construction efficiency, are land and infrastructure, because you can, the land, there's only so much land available, and you have to go where the infrastructure is. When you flush the toilet, it only goes one way. And then financing and subsidies. It's like, can you get something where you can finance it, where someone can own it? Or do you need subsidies? So everything I try to do is pull all the levers that you need the least amount, if no subsidies, from government to create housing. So that's what this is all about. And when I saw what Durham did, um, so Durham changed their laws in 2019, and Durham has been able to create and keep, and their flow, their cost of affordable housing in the triangle was going, the cost of housing in the triangle was going like this. Durham made changes in 2018 that was able to flatten the curve. Where Raleigh and Chapel Hill house costs continued to climb, Durham was able to cut that curve by creating, by doing this exact same trick. So it's a mix of flag lots and small backyard lots, but by limiting the house size to keep them in the workforce level. So that's what we base these on. Um, after two painful years, I, we passed this in the City of Asheville, something similar two weeks ago. Um, but here, um, so where, one of the, 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 the key thing on this slide I was gonna present was showing this curve from Durham that literally shows that their house co- their house costs flattened. And then at the same time, instead of creating displacement for homeowners, it created opportunity for legacy homeowners to have generational funds, whether it was to fix the houses that they lived in, which is what happened in Durham. Durham wasn't a bulldoze place. After these rule changes, the amount of demolition permits for houses decreased in Durham. And funds and, you know, generational families were able to have the funds by selling off their backyards to build out and fix their front homes. So it actually worked in the opposite, so. So I saw that, and then the data point, the, the other slide I was gonna share walking into this was before, uh, I pulled today's figures that showed, I did a filter on Realtor.com that showed the amount of housing, so new housing, built, you know, housing that was just built in Durham for less than $350,000. Um, so new construction homes, what's for sale today is 17 houses in Durham. Less than $350,000, a mix of three bedrooms, two baths. Um, in Asheville, zero. There's not one house that's newly built in Asheville for less than $350,000. Here in Hendersonville, where your comprehensive plan says need 10,000 new homes over the next X years, zero, one. So the purpose of these rules is to help create the tools without needing the subsidies for how you can create more workforce housing, so that one year from now, when we come back here and look at that same report, you can match Durham's numbers. So that's what, that's what is all here, and so thank you for considering all this. And your staff has been wonderful to work with, and I really wanna thank them for this. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes, Mayor, it has.
We'll open this public hearing. We have two people signed up. Uh, first, Virginia Tackle.
Hello again. I am speaking as a citizen and taxpayer of the City of Hendersonville, I wanna make that clear. Still an environmentalist, but, so, um, this is so amazing to me that this is coming before you today. Flag lots and small lots support the existing character of the neighborhoods. If you walk and drive through neighborhoods, you will see similar arrangements now. Um, infill, we already talked about that. It makes best use of my, all of our tax dollars. I had all this written up, Matt, before you did your thing, I just want you to know. Um, I've already paid for the roads and, and water and sewer infrastructure investments. It only makes sense to provide housing opportunities to families in walkable neighborhoods within the city rather than in large-scale sterile developments away from the city center. So I was fortunate, after I'd lived here for a year, to purchase the, probably the only house I could afford. And I love where I live, I can walk and bike to town. Well, in 2020, the end of 2023, when the, um, assessments were done on the value of your house, my property tax has almost doubled. I did the math, and my lot, I've enjoyed growing flowers and giving away to the neighborhood, it's way too expensive for me to grow flowers. I need to put something on that so I can afford to live in my home. I am the poster grandma for this project. I really am. Um, it's just a happy accident, and I've already done some research. Um, I've found a, um, an affordable duplex that I could put on my property. I haven't measured out, I don't even have financing yet. I just need you guys to say yes to this. I mean, I'm a committed member of the community, and I want to have more neighbors. Mountain True has this program, Neighbors for More Neighbors, in case you're not aware of that. I am a neighbor for more neighbors. Where I live, there's a vacant house next to me, which does not make me happy at all. Across the street, there's business, that's fine. Next to me, there is a home, the main home, and then there's a, a two-unit duplex. That's the character of my neighborhood. I should be able to put two units on my place, have new neighbors. I don't intend to sell it, I wanna offer attainable renting for people like myself so that I can have more neighbors and people can afford to live in this wonderful city of Hendersonville. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken Bitch.
Ken Bitch, Gen 46, Patton Street. The growing need for housing in the city and the county has generated a flurry of exploration of ways to increase housing availability, including potential infill development. This applicant-driven proposal offers yet another option in the form of a text amendment that would adjust, change, and alter specifications for placing housing on a site, particularly for parcels that are underutilized and not amenable to compliance with existing zoning code requirements. The amendment introduces many alterations to realize multiple occupancy on a site. And many of us are aware of places in the city where small units currently exist that have compatibility with the conditions of the parcel or the neighborhood in which they are located. And we are aware of other parcels that might offer possibilities for development. However, our focus in these explorations and in the text amendment is primarily on how to fit the housing onto a parcel. But what about the impacts on adjacent parcels, particularly in an existing residential neighborhood? How do the changes from a text amendment affect adjacent properties and their residents? With this amendment in effect, we are changing the rules that in many ways created and shaped the characters of a neighborhood. A neighborhood in which residents have chosen to make their home, to enjoy a sustainable quality of life, and for which they import sometimes most of their resources to live at this location with its specific character. For many, zoning is a covenant, and when rules are changed, that is a violation of that covenant. This is something that you've heard before from residents. With this amendment, development on a small site could entail removal of canopy trees and buffering vegetation. But when you eliminate shade, that summer heat index rises for the entire neighborhood. And then there can be a sudden loss of privacy, that a housing assistant representative recently described as "the ability to open the back door in your pajamas and let the dog out." With the amendment, in some locations, unsustainable situations with parking and traffic may also occur. And we hear many references to the missing middle. But in some cases, we may be causing the middle ground between homes to go missing. Infill development should compatibly fit within the parcel in which it is located and not alter everything surrounding it, and especially the lives of those who neighbor it. An important example, in Hendersonville, we are honored and privileged to be the home of a large number of veterans who have served us and our country and have chosen to live here in the city as their home place, a haven to retire, rest, and sometimes to heal, where the conditions of their home place become critical to their well-being. Some still bear the wounds of their service to us and are still in a long process of healing and have sought this home place where they can do so. In some neighborhoods, their homes have been honored and granted special respect in need of quiet and free from disturbance, where neighbors handle the garbage carts and ma- mail carriers make special effort to see that important mail is directly personally delivered. There are many such stories of caring and outreach in our city. Some here will remember a situation where the city has supported individuals in need and supported efforts for home place protection. A few people in this room will remember what I'm talking about. But a text amendment allows no such considerations. So a resident may discover their quiet home place suddenly confronted with up to six homes 10 feet adjacent, and then left with no options or alternative for respite. However, one does recognize that the specifications of this text amendment would certainly facilitate the realization of the applicant's potential project, located as it is on a long vacant awkward parcel on Fleming Street with its narrow width and terracing terrain, but also where it might find compatibility in its location, be doing a dental office and a cluster of cottages and a multi-unit residence, and distinguished significantly by rows of buffering trees on both sides of the parcel. So perhaps another vehicle or mechanism other than a text amendment could bring that project into realization. Without the potential negative impacts, the text amendment might unintentionally engender the lives of neighboring residents and their properties on certain parcels and certain neighborhoods in the city. Thank you.
Is there anyone online who can make any comments?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. What was that? I have a call.
Hi. I didn't get to sign up. May I speak tonight, Madam Mayor?
Okay.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. You all know me from several boards and committees in town. I'm the Advocacy and Community Engagement Director for Builders Association and a former business owner prior to that. However, tonight, I'm here as your colleague, your client, your ally, and your fellow community member. Recently, I found myself in a transition of life to where I'm now co-parenting and solo parenting four children who all go to school in city limits. I'm in transitional housing at the moment. And while I have the opportunity to sell property, which gives me a privilege over a lot of folks in our community, I still have nowhere to live when my lease is up on May 1st. And it's easy to throw a pity party, right, for myself, but I think about folks like the disabled vet, or the widow, or somebody on a fixed income, and first responders, and teachers, and most importantly, the workforce, and as we're amidst all of this disaster. And all of them need different kinds of housing, right? We're talking about different kinds of attainable housing. So mentioning the great work that nonprofits do, like housing, housing assistance and Habitat, is really crucial. It makes our community thrive, and they have a niche to what they do. And this small change will add to the supply, not cost one thing to the city, while diversifying the options for attainable housing that's attainable for everybody. And it also utilizes the existing infrastructure and adding to the community feel. When an area has affordable housing, it's, that's concentrated, it stresses the infrastructure more and adds to overall maintenance and cost of expanded infrastructure. Folks, allowing folks to sell off a parcel of their land, like Ms. Virginia just spoke of, and increasing the housing options on smaller lots prevents displacement and creates more opportunities for committed neighbors like myself and those that I previously mentioned. Thank you, guys, all for your leadership. Thank you for letting me speak. I wasn't here in time to sign up, and I appreciate y'all very much.
Thank you. Okay. Now, a public hearing. Counsel, discussion, motion?
Madam Mayor. Oh, you have got something?
Oh, no.
Did I surprise you?
Madam Mayor, I move City Council adopt an ordinance amending the official City of Hendersonville zoning ordinance, Article 5, zoning district classifications, Article 8, exceptions and modifications, and Article 12, definitions of terms, and further amending the official City of Hendersonville subdivision ordinance, Article 3, configurations, Article 8, measurements, and Article 9, definitions, based on the following. One, the petition is found to be consistent with the City of Hendersonville GEN-H comprehensive plan based on the information from the staff analysis and the public hearing, and because the proposed text amendment aligns with the GEN-H 2045 comprehensive plan, future land use and conservation map, and the character area descriptions. We find this petition to be reasonable and in the public interest based on the information from the staff analysis and from the public hearing, and because the proposed amendment creates an opportunity to address the need for additional attainable housing in the city. The proposed amendment allows for property owners to better utilize their property and earn additional revenue. The proposed amendment ensures compatibility by limiting the size and scale of new construction resulting from the proposed allowances.
Is there any? Those in favor of the zoning subdivision text amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. As have it, motion carries. Further options?
Good to see you.
Okay. It's been requested that we take a five-minute break. We will do that. Anyone who wants to leave can.
My time is over. I couldn't wait in here. Press learned.
Right. Third public hearing, rezoning, conditional zoning district, Henderson County Courthouse, and detention center expansion.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. This is a conditional zoning district petition. So the property is located at 200 North Grove Street, and the applicant and property owner is Henderson County. The applicant is requesting to rezone the subject property to plan institutional development conditional zoning district. The subject property is approximately 14.78 acres, and they're proposing to construct a 90,859-square-foot courthouse, and also a 53,443-square-foot detention center expansion. A GEN-H plan designates this parcel as institutional. The NCM for this project occurred on January 23, 2025, and there were 15 residents in attendance. We received zero pre-submitted public comments for that meeting, so all the discussion happened during that meeting. The main concerns were the streams, consideration of, sorry, consideration of impacts from increased traffic, the need for the expansion, discussion of if a TIA would be required, concerns over the public drop-off area, possible issues with that, the concern of visual aesthetics of the courthouse structure and how it can be made more welcoming, and whether the, or project was proposed to have any sustainable aspects to it. Here's some site photos taken at the sites. At the top left is the front half of the existing courthouse parking lot. That's proposed to be replaced with the new courthouse structure. The top right is the existing parking lot entrance located across Third Avenue, or across from Fourth Avenue, no, Third Avenue. That's proposed to be retained and be used as the new entrance for the public drop-off area. The bottom left view is of the Sheriff's Office impound lot, which is proposed to be removed and replaced with surface parking. And the bottom right is a blue line stream that runs along the boundary of the site. So the courthouse slash law enforcement campus dates back all the way to 1990s. So the courthouse slash law enforcement campus dates back all the way to 1990s. May 4th, 1993, City Council issued a special use permit to allow for the construction of the Henderson County courthouse. On August 19th, 1999, City Council approved a special use permit for allow the construction of the detention facility. And on June 3rd, 2010, City Council rezoned six parcels and issued a special use permit to allow for the construction of the sheriff's office and the surface parking lot on Fourth Avenue. So getting into what is being proposed with this new development, as far as buildings are concerned, as I previously mentioned, this involves a 53,443 square foot detention center addition and a 90,859 square foot courthouse addition, bringing the total of those buildings to 113,804 square feet for the detention center and 189,975 square feet for the courthouse. The proposed height of the courthouse is 92.75 feet and detention center is proposed at 25 and a half feet. The max height within the PID district is 50 feet. The applicant is requesting a condition be placed on the development to allow for the proposed height. The subject property is within the downtown edge character area of the GNH plan, which gives suggested guidance of height to 64 feet. As a reference, the existing 1995 courthouse is approximately 45 feet tall and the sheriff's office is approximately 50 feet tall. The site will have a new access on North Grove Street. This new access is approximately 30 feet from the property line shared with Martin Luther King Jr. Park. It appears this access will reduce the taper slash storage lane for the Apple Country Transit Stop. However, it has been relayed to by city staff that this will not impact the transit stop's function. The eastern entrance to the Fourth Avenue parking lot will move further east from its current location and will no longer line up with Pine Street. All other accesses will generally be in the same areas they are today. Sidewalks are already covering most of the property boundary except for a small section on Fourth Avenue near the railroad right-of-way. The county plans to replace any removed sidewalks or any sidewalks that they removed during construction, they will replace. Internal sidewalks will connect the public street to the main entrances of both the detention center and courthouse. Five-foot wide sidewalk are required for new construction from property line to property line. The site would be required to provide these sidewalks from where they currently terminate on Fourth Avenue to their property line, which is within the railway right-of-way. All site lighting will be required to conform with the city's lighting standards for non-residential developments as well as areas abutting a stream buffer. The development includes a total of 579 parking spaces, marking 117 space increase from the existing conditions on the site currently. As I mentioned, the USGS maps do show a blue line stream along the property boundary. The site will be required to provide vehicular use landscaping, common open space plantings, and also street trees. The site currently has 58,515 square feet of existing canopy, which is 9.63% of the site. The development is proposing to retain 13,304 square feet, or roughly 22.74%, and the applicant is choosing option three as far as replantings, they'll have to provide 15% new canopy through tier-two plantings. So moving into this, as you all probably, or as you all are aware, there is a session law from 2006 which limited the height to 64 feet in Hendersonville. The session law was later revised to only include the area outlined in yellow that you see on the right. And as you will see, this property is outside of the yellow boundary, so the 64 feet would not apply to this property. A traffic impact analysis was submitted for this project in accordance with an approved scope by the city and NC DOT. The TIA showed that the new development is expected to generate 1,132 daily trips, 115 AM peak hour trips, and 94 PM peak hour trips. There were 10 intersections reviewed as part of this TIA. The traffic impact analysis for the development was submitted in February of 2025. The primary feedback on the initial TIA focused on the necessity for turn lane warrants at unsignaled intersections. City received the version two of the TIA from the developer and the city received one back from, on that TIA, from our traffic consultant, Kim Lee Horn, between planning board and city council. Planning board was made aware during their meeting of the need to study the turn lane warrants, but they did not mention any concerns with seeing those findings. The TIA did recommend a 50-foot right turn lane and at Fourth Avenue at the first lot driveway and a 75-foot right turn lane on the second lot driveway. However, due to complications with the installation of turn lanes at this location, the TIA suggested that the requirement for these be left to the city's discretion during the driveway permit application process. Kim Lee Horn found this recommendation reasonable, given the complications noted by the developer in their TIA. No other mitigations were proposed for transportation for this project. So on the screen, you will see a proposed city staff condition that was not agreed to by the developer. They have countered this condition, and I'll go over that in the next slide, but as far as this condition is concerned, as I previously mentioned, five-foot sidewalks are required for new construction from property line to property line, so that was triggered. This condition aims to have that sidewalk not be five feet, but follow the park-like design that the previous development of this site has followed, which is eight-foot wide sidewalk and that utility strip that you see. An example of what that park-like sidewalk is is shown. So instead of the five-foot normal sidewalk, the city is requesting that that continuous design be achieved. So these conditions have been proposed by the developer and are currently shown on the site plans. The developer proposes to exceed the maximum allowable building height. So the top of the roof coping height is 92.75 feet. This is 42.75 feet taller than what is allowed in planned institutional development and 28.75 feet taller than what is recommended in the GNH Downtown Edge Character Area District. The next condition, the developer proposes parking spaces as outlined in the parking summary. Courthouse's detention center and law enforcement centers are not currently found in the city's off-street parking table. Staff have reviewed the proposed parking and the justification provided for the numbers provided and feel comfortable with what is being proposed. The next condition proposed is new landscaping requirements and calculations are based on new project area. The developer is requesting that their new planting requirements only be associated with the new project area, which basically eliminates them from including the existing sheriff's office and some of the 95 courthouse into their calculations. And lastly, is their counter to the city's proposed condition. The developer intends to pay a fee and leave as outlined in the zoning ordinance of the installation of sidewalks specified by the city's proposed condition. This equates to approximately 100 linear feet of sidewalks. So moving on, so I've included some photos of some comparable buildings in our downtown area that you're likely familiar with, just as a reference point. So the skyline is approximately 70 feet on the Main Street facade and approximately 76 feet on the rear facade of the building. It's worth noting that Main Street is at a higher elevation than Grove Street. It's about 20 feet, 21 feet taller on Main Street than it is on Grove. Similarly, here's the First Citizens Bank Building, and it's approximately 75 feet all the way around, and it sits at the same elevation as the skyline. The subject property is designated as institutional, a designation shared by several nearby properties primarily owned by government entities. Surrounding areas to the north, south, and west are designated as downtown, encompassing a wide range of properties and zoning classifications. To the south of the subject property, their open space designation largely comprised of floodplain areas and stream buffers for Mud Creek. The subject property is not listed on the land suitability or land supply maps due into it previously being developed. The character area description is generally consistent and the zoning crosswalk is consistent. So the proposal to remove the public drop-off area in front of the courthouse was introduced by city staff to Henderson County. The aim was to enhance with alignment of the GNH comprehensive plan prioritizing pedestrian-friendly spaces, buildings situated closer to the street, and relocating vehicular use areas to the side and rear, thereby fostering a stronger sense of place. This change was meant to ensure that the courthouse design was in a better alignment with both the historic courthouse and the 1995 courthouse. The historic courthouse was an example in our GNH comprehensive plan, as a good example of incorporating public spaces to add to this public realm. However, with, after meeting with the Hendersonville Fire Department, I found out that the public drop-off area is not actually serving as an aerial access required by the fire code for the building. However, it does give the fire department a better place to stage their trucks during the event of an alarm or similar emergency. It allows them to be off of Grove Street and off an active road. So due to the potential life safety aspects associated with the public drop-off area, I agree that it does serve a public safety function. Staff's only recommendation at this time is that the exit from the public drop-off be a ride-out only to reduce possible pedestrian and vehicular conflicts on Grove Street, and this can be worked out by staff during the driveway permit process. So the subject property is the only planned institutional development in the immediate area. Located on the edge of downtown, the properties surrounding land uses and zoning reflect its positioning. To the west, properties are on C1, which encompasses the city's historic downtown. Portions of downtown are also included in the local historic district, offering additional protection to its historic character. To the north and south of the subject property, parcels on CMU or central mixed use. A zoning district commonly found throughout downtown to revive a transition between C1 and other districts. And to the east, properties on C2, which is a zoning designation that usually follows railway lines. So moving into compatibility, since the 1990s, the property has functioned as a courthouse campus. Over time, it has expanded to include a detention center, sheriff's office, and additional surface parking lots. Evolving to accommodate the growing needs of the county, the latest plan involves further expansion of this longstanding judicial campus. The changed conditions, the Henderson County commissioners have determined that expanding judicial campus is necessary to better serve the residents of Hendersonville and Henderson County. As far as public interest, the current courthouse accommodates essential offices to serve the residents of Henderson County. This expansion would provide the county with the space necessary to operate more efficiently and potentially enhance the services already offered to its citizens. The site will continue to be served by City Water and Sewer. North Grove Street, First Avenue, and Fourth Avenue are all city-maintained streets in this area. As I mentioned, there is a blue line stream which is located along the boundary. There is no floodplain or floodway on this property. They are meeting the requirements for tree preservation as well. So the planning board reviewed this project at their March 13th meeting, voting unanimously recommend approval. The planning board did not add any additional conditions to their recommendation, but wanted to make a point of emphasis that city council explore ways to add additional ADA parking to the new courthouse. This is the comprehensive plan consistency statement that the planning board made in their motion. This was their rationale for approval. I've drafted rationale for denial, and I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Would someone from Henderson County like to speak?
Absolutely, Madam Mayor, and thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, Council. What this moment really here is, in front of you tonight, is seven years in the process to the moment that we're standing at today. Beginning back in 2018, the sheriff began to study the needs of his detention center and that facility. That was continued actually into an additional study in 2020 held by the Board of Commissioners. In 2021, the Board of Commissioners contracted to have a study of the courthouse space as well, leading into a conversation that ultimately ended with both of those facilities needing to be updated and grown to meet what is a growing population in this county. What you all know and what you've seen here in Hendersonville, but you see in your neighbors around you, we happen to be in one of the fastest-growing communities in the state of North Carolina. I hope sincerely that in some ways that doesn't stop. The only thing worse than being the fastest-growing is being the slowest-growing. What you'll see, though, here tonight are buildings that were designed and thoroughly vetted multiple years through the Board of Commissioners that they believe presents both the utility necessary to provide those functions for what represents a third of our government and the judicial system, while also being fiscally conservative with the local taxpayers' dollar and meeting those services. I'm here this evening to answer any questions that you have that I can as the owner representative for the county, but in a moment, I'm going to invite up the consultants, who are architects and engineers and not just bureaucrats. So hopefully, they can answer any more technical questions for what you have about this project, and I'm happy to come back up in a moment as you have any for me. At this time, what I'd like to do is invite up the main architect for the project, Mr. Steve White from Fintrist Architects, and he can outline the project and the site plan for you all.
Thank you, Mr. Todd, Madam Mayor, and members of the City Council. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. Thank you for your time and attention. We're excited to be presenting this billing to you this evening. Tyler went through the site plan quite well, and it was very comprehensive. Thank you for that report. And I'm going to, we have this here now, but I'm going to circle back to it towards the end, and we're going to address some of the specific concerns that the planning board had when we were here last month. But very quickly, if we just make sure everybody knows where everything is, the courthouse that exists today is right here. It's kind of hard to move this around. The detention center is here, and then where you see the darker gray that's, you know, next to the detention center, these are the appendage additions with various purposes to them, and a reconfiguration of those entrances, which I'll have our detention architect come up. And then over here on the courthouse side, and the sheriff's office, by the way, is not part of the project, but it is part of the campus. The courthouse addition to the north, which will become the new courthouse, and this will really be more of an administrative building for the 1995 building. All of the public parking is way up here to the north. You'll see there's a separation here. That's for staff, and it's actually slightly elevated, so there's a little ramp and a gate where the staff can have a more secure environment to be parking, separate from the general public. And then the judges, even further, will have another gate where they go down a ramp and will park under the building, fully secure from the public way. And we'll get into some more details on the front here, but we do have handicap parking, which we have expanded in the last month. We'll talk about that more. The building has been placed where it is very specifically in relation to the 1995 building, but also in relationship to the urban site, the plan around it. You're going to see in the renderings that come that we have located the main entrance of the building, this portion of the loja, which is where the main entrance is, directly centered on Third Avenue, which creates a visual connection from Main Street. We also have sighted this first floor such that it is a gentle rise from Grove, but a very small rise, so it's about a 2, 1% to 2%, meaning that the building, it always feels better when you come up to a building. But that means that there is a disparity between the elevation of the floors of the 95 building and the floors of this building. So the way we rectify that is we have a split level that goes to the ground floor down and the first floor up at this, we call hyphen connector between the two. And then we've kept the same elevation for the second floor where the most heavily trafficked courts are, so that there can be free-flowing movement between the administrative side of the courthouse and the actual courtrooms of the courthouse. These are the elevations. So this is that Grove Street elevation. This here, where the seal of Henderson County is, is on center with Third Avenue. And as we know, this is a large building. We have a lot of, we have seven courtrooms in this new courthouse. We have stepped the building strategically such that this main columnar element here is actually very close in height to the 1995 building to relate to it. And then gently step as you go back 30, 40, and so on feet to get to that full height of the building. This will be the north elevation, so the parking lot side, and that shows you where these steps occur. these steps occur, so that first front elevation element, this is the side of that, which again is very comparable with the existing courthouse at about 45 feet. And then stepping up to this element here, which is where all the public lobbies are to the courtrooms. And then the expression of the architecture is such that it is designated specifically to express what's going on in terms of the function inside. So we call these saddlebags, so the, these elements that are pulled away from the main mass of the building are specifically for the functions that our house within. So this is the, where all the courtrooms are, at least on one side of the building. There are special meeting rooms between judges and attorneys that occur in this mass here. So going around, this is to the east, facing towards the railroad. This is where those meeting rooms that I just mentioned occur. And this is the back of the courthouse, the existing 95 building. And then there's a special connector elevated tunnel that connects for prisoner movement from the jail. This is a south elevation, and there are these very important connectors. In the new courthouse, we have complete physical separation between the movement of the staff and the judges, which occur in this hyphen connector here, and then the public in this one here. The only place where those two come together is at rooms like courtrooms or clerks' transaction counters and so forth. So, and prisoners from the jail are coming from a tunnel, and they have completely segregated circulation for security purposes. This is a rendering illustrating that front elevation. So again, you can see how the building steps as it makes its way down to the court of the existing 95 building. Just as a matter of scale, the courtrooms are typically 40 feet by 60 feet in dimension nominally. They have ceilings that are appropriately about 12 feet in height. So it takes us about 16 feet of floor-to-floor to get the superstructure in and the mechanical equipment in, in order to get that 11 to 12-foot floor, or ceiling, within the courtroom. This is a closer depiction of the building as it relates to the 95, and this is that hyphen connector. You can see where the handicap parking is in this entry plaza. And then on the parking, parking lot side from the north. And then from, as you come from Main Street down Third Avenue to the entrance of the courthouse, connecting back with the main public square there. The materials of the building, we are using a precast concrete, which is made to look or depict limestone, Indiana limestone. The existing courthouse also is a precast concrete. It is in a, in a more of a gray granite tone, and we're specifically differentiating because we feel strongly that if we were to try to match it exactly, it would somehow be slightly off, or maybe the building's dirty, or, you know, clean, or what have you. And so having a complementary color, we thought was appropriate. In terms of the metal, wherever you see that there's metal panels, it's a dark bronze color, and then clear insulated, high-performing glass. So this is the site plan. I don't know, Jared DeRitter, do you want to join me for just a few minutes and talk about?
Sure.
The parking, specifically the things that we've adjusted
Sure.
in the last month? This is Jared DeRitter with WGLA.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. Appreciate the opportunity. So this site plan before you is a bit different than the site plan that was included in your packet. And we sent this to Tyler yesterday for inclusion in this presentation. And the importance of this site plan is to point out, and kind of an overview of how we took the recommendations and thoughts from planning board meeting and incorporated them into the site plan. We did hear a concern about the number of ADA spaces that are on the site. And for context, I wanted to let you know that the existing courthouse facility has nine ADA spaces, and there's only seven required by code, so that's a net two over code. This courthouse facility by code is required seven, which we're providing up at the front where Steve's cursor is there. We've also included additional ADA spaces down in the lower lot. The idea is to, again, while we meet code, we wanted to exceed code, so the four additional spaces would exceed the code limit drastically. The idea there, albeit, is that if it's in a lower lot, the pedestrian would just migrate through the existing city park and onto the public way there, where the sidewalk is up to the front door of the building. I believe that's all of, so we did do some modifications also to the staff parking as well, where we rearranged the ADA spaces back there. But basically, the number of spaces that are presented on this plan are the same number of spaces in your packet with minor adjustments, again, to accommodate comments from the planning board.
Okay, thanks, Jared. We also wanted to speak more specifically to the jail improvements, and Greg Vasili with McMillan-Paston Smith has joined us.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. As Steve had mentioned, there are a number of expansions or growths off of the existing detention center facility, starting at the northwest corner.
That's, that west.
The other west. So that addition sort of infills the space between the existing detention center and the courthouse. This will be used for inmate holding. And just to the north of where Steve's cursor is, is where there will be the connector that leads inmates to the new courthouse annex. The existing facility itself is going to be reconfigured predominantly in the southern portion. That sort of X-shaped bit of the existing facility is going to remain largely the same, with the exception of some architectural surgery we're doing to thread together circulation corridors. On the northeast side, this is an additional housing pod that's expanding off of the detention center. And then if we make our way to the southeast, Steve, you're doing wonderful job.
I'm trying.
The southeast corner, this will be the new inmate booking area, and it's also going to serve as the primary entry into the facility. So the primary entry at the moment is on the west side of the, of the building. That will still remain in place, however, the primary entry is going to be that, that southeast corner. Moving our way all the way to the south, all the additions all over, on this far south side, yep, right there, yep. So that is a addition coming off of the existing vehicular sallyport. So it's serving essentially the same function as the existing vehicular sallyport, just additional programmatic space. And then the last addition to the facility is on the far west, yep, thank you, Steve, the area we're calling Area C, that's also additional housing for inmates. If we can go to the next slide. These are a couple renderings that we have showing, showing the intent, the architectural intent for the facility. These expansions off of the facility are intended to be primarily precast concrete, similar to the existing courthouse and the courthouse annex. We are looking to draw some relation to the existing facility by way of the horizontal datums that you can see in the, in the existing detention center. Those are meant to carry through and around the new, the new expansions. And we are intending to have the color tone similarly complement the existing facility. The image on the lower portion of the slide, that is the new, the new primary entrance for the facility that we're relocating from, from the west side.
Thank you, Greg. And that concludes our presentation, and we're happy to respond to questions.
No? Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes, Mayor, it has.
Okay, we will open that, the public hearing. Person who signed up here is Ken Pitch.
Ken Pitch, 1046 Patton Street. The project before us is an essential public facility, and it is important to understand that it has gone through a long, responsible process of design and redesign. And the key determining factor has been budget, which is something that most of us as city and county taxpayers understand, because we and our descendants will be paying for it. So what we see in the plan before us is informed by budget considerations. But what we must also consider are functionality and several aspects of compatibility. One issue brings immediate attention. The courthouse plan offers a drop-off zone and eight handicap parking spaces near the main entrance. However, for all other non-staff patrons, they must negotiate stairs to enter the courthouse. Now, is that compliant with ADA considerations or advisable? Many in the county have limitations of mobility. One sees this when everyone goes to the courthouse. And this will include the drop-off drivers when the handicap spaces are full. And while the stairs might be easily negotiable on a warm spring day, on a major weather event like last night's storm, this will, this will not be the case. I mean, consider negotiating stairs where four seasons, a city of four seasons, when it rains, it rains; when it snows, it snows; and when it's hot, it's hot. And people have to negotiate stairs to get into this facility. And also, many who are entering the courthouse will be there under stress and less attentive to the movements and the steps. I think I heard something there would be access to the sidewalk on the street, but then you're still negotiating elevation, and that's where the buses unload. I mean, that's not going to be the solution. For a big budget, a big budget project like this, we should have easier access. I mean, let's solve the problem before we have like a slew of incidents. And one recalls of the initial design called for a multi-story garage that had parking access, similar to that of the hospital, that you walked onto the floor to an elevator. But this facility of access problem, it really deserves further attention, how it works in practicality for, for the people who will be using this essential facility. But this shifts to the other issue, and that's the number of parking spaces. From the original concept, the complex suggested a multi-story garage that would address the, the parking needs. But the question is now whether the lots in the plan are adequate, especially considering the further growth that has initiated this, this process for additional facilities. And this becomes a major consideration for the city. Because if the lots are not adequate, where will people park, both in the short term and in the future, when their alternatives for parking may be limited? The search for parking on the city streets would add to local traffic negotiation issues, understanding that many going to the courthouse will be experiencing stress and urgency. So the parking, the adequacy of the parking really has to be considered. And then any long-term resident will quickly recognize that height of downtown buildings in Hendersonville is a sensitive, major issue. And this massive building would have a major, major impact on the cityscape. We might acknowledge that the, the project as designed and functioning will throw a cog in the working of the comp plan concept of the area. Now, in terms of the planning for the public, it would be helpful to see a visual rendering of the facility as it would appear in the cityscape. What is that building going to look in the cityscape? And also in relation to the iconic historic courthouse, that is the key determinant here. But another action would be to raise a balloon, like they do for fireworks, to see how high that building will be and where it is. And of course, at a time like this, when it comes to building height, we miss Steve Carucker and his input on such an issue. But this is an important project, and we just need to be careful and do it right. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
May I also speak for public?
I allowed it last time. You can, you can speak.
All right. Ms. Williams, Travis Avenue, thank you for your time. So let's see, yeah, the building design as a concern, we were talking about this being in the downtown historic edge, which in the comp plan has a certain design quality. And as we talked about on First Avenue, that includes 50% brick. Wasn't sure if there's brick in this design. And also, you know, using compatible materials is, is an important part of the compatibility too. I wasn't sure where we could find the same bronze, dark bronze metal material used anywhere else downtown. Let's see, and, and I heard the county representative say that this started seven years ago, but for us, this started 125 years ago at least, when we had the historic courthouse, because this is a long-arching history for our community, the traditional courthouse and the new courthouse, and now the newer courthouse. So there's this arc of history for us that includes the skyline, where on that end of town, the tallest building you do see is where the county commissioners meet, and that is at our historic courthouse. A little fact about that courthouse, the lady justice does not have blind, blinds over her eyes. She's only one of three in the country moving along. So I'm hearing it's supposed to be 92.75 feet high. I mean, that's a monstrosity. I mean, the community has come out over and over and said, you know, 64 feet, that's really pushing the limit for us. And so the old courthouse is 45 feet. So let's talk about this story from over 125 years ago. That's our history. It's 45 feet tall. So if we honor that history, it looks closer to 45 feet tall, not 92 feet tall. And then the Blue Line Stream, Blue Line Stream, of course, I want to make sure we have those stream buffer protections in place throughout the practice of the building, make sure Mike's on that, to make sure there's no erosion going into that river. And so the point about First Citizens and Skyland being 70 feet and 76 feet, you know, that is on one end of historic town. So it's on that, that end of town. It's not on that end of town where our historic courthouse and the historic skyline is. So it does have a different placement. What I heard the planning staff say was, you know, the, the downtown's on a hill, it's 21 feet taller than Grove Street. So if you take the 45-foot courthouse and you add 21 feet, that comes to about, really close to 64 feet, actually, which is that height limit again. So we're just asking for more consideration about our historic skyline. The concern is that this will set the precedent, and we want to preserve that historic skyline. I remember Councilwoman Simpson, when we were talking about First Avenue Villas, you know, this vision of how it would be this tiering from the downtown to the edge to the, so I'm just looking at this project, and I don't see that tiering at all. I mean, you're talking about this. I mean, you're talking about this to double height of downtown buildings. And then, once again, note that the dark sky compliance, we want to make sure that that's going to happen because it's not a historic building. It might have historic, like, lamp settings, but we want to make sure that the caps are on them and the light is pointing down. Let's see. So yes, also, the planning staff noted that your historic downtown Edge that you promised our community in the comp plan, that this building is 28.75 feet taller. That's almost three floors taller. And once again, we're not seeing that 50% brick. Another point that I brought up in the neighborhood compatibility meeting is around the public art. So when you look in the medium courthouse, the, not the historic one, but the one we currently have, and you look up in the mural, the only black people painted there are the help. And this was painted 30 years ago. And I think that it's a terrible thing to do in this place of justice. And I just want to make sure that the county's going to be thoughtful about their public art, make sure it's more inclusive, and even consider updating that mural. And then, the one thing the designer said when I asked about lead certification was that this building was actually pretty close to becoming lead certified. So I wanted to encourage the county commissioners to go ahead and push forward and make an example and have this building be lead certified, since it already pretty much is meeting those requirements. And once again, the county does represent the city residents, too. City residents pay both county and city taxes, and the city residents want this building to be less tall. Our skyline is quaint, and it mirrors the historic small town that our residents has built and who they, that they love and passionately protect. You know, when you drive over the hill on Spartanburg Highway as you pop, like, you're just about to hit the co-op there, you look over and you see our beautiful Mount Pisgah, and you see the courthouse there, and you see the little downtown buildings. Have you thought about how this giant block is just going to go bonk, and half that view is going to be gone now? Something that we all cherish, it's a shared resource for us. Let's see. So, and of course, we as a community, we definitely support our judicial branch. I want to make sure that's clear. But we do want to hold the county to the same requirements as everybody else. The downtown Edge has been defined, and this is not it. Keep going. Honor the comp plan. Keep your word. And then lastly, with the detention center, I just wanted to remind, in the design, that it is innocent till proven guilty. So these people have not been convicted yet. Some, most of the people are being held there. So, you know, I was asking questions about, will it have different types of lighting, like, less fluorescent lighting? Will the walls be painted more soothing colors? Will there be access to the outdoors? And I know that they did mention that courtyard access is required by law. I wasn't sure where that was in the design. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone on line?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. And we will close this public hearing. Discussion.
Let's start. I'd really like to see you guys build the sidewalk instead of paying a fee in lieu. And after seeing the picture of that Blue Line Stream, it wouldn't be bad for you to clean that out either. I do think it might be good for the general public to speak a little bit more about parking and the ability to increase parking moving forward and kind of the thought process that went around that, because I'm assuming that a parking deck would add a significant sum to the project cost. So it might be helpful to understand why the commissioners chose this option in a Cliff Notes version.
Few things there to unpack, and I'll kind of take them in reverse order. That's all right. As far as the parking deck, that certainly was a conversation that was had publicly amongst the board. The cost of that parking deck pushed the cost of the project into a place the Board of Commissioners felt unacceptable at the time. What that did was force our design staff to go back and look at the site, try to maximize that ground parking today. Publicly, the question was asked and answered, when this building opens, will it have sufficient parking? And the answer to that is yes. Every study that has been conducted, the answer to that question was yes. The space in the lot does facilitate, potentially in the future, to have a parking structure placed on it if that need arises. But today, and again, this is a public conversation, there was just not a cost-benefit analysis that could support a parking deck when the surface parking could meet the need in the initial years of that building and most certainly for some years to come. Right? When we get into the realities of the operation of that building, and if 10 or 20 years from now it needs more parking, the Board of Commissioners at this time decided that would be a Board of Commissioners tomorrow question that they wish to wrestle with. But they felt comfortable with what the parking was, and that was supported by the analysis done by our design team. Moving back to your question about the Blue Line Stream, that stream straddles both of our properties, and I'm happy to work with the city and any groups. We've already approached Mountain True and other organizations to see if they want to have a voluntary cleanup day. So if we want to work on that together, I'm happy to help facilitate a cleanup day along the stream. That's not a qualm at all. Moving on to your last question about the sidewalk, there was some rationale for why we wanted to do the fee in lieu, and I just feel that we need the opportunity to say that, one of which is that it would dead-end into the end of a rail line. And at the time, we did not feel that that was the most prudent thing to do, to have it just dead-end. We've actually done a little bit more research. In order to meet the ADA standard, that sidewalk would have to extend past our property line to the other side of that railway, because you're required to have a 15-foot landing area and outside of the rail area in order for folks with mobility issues to be, have the areas to be safe. That's a conversation we can have, but that's certainly a struggle today for property which we don't control to meet an ADA standard for building sidewalks through a rail corridor. But I'm happy to have a conversation. I'm happy to have any of my staff and consultants come up and answer any questions about that. But that was some of the rationale for that particular issue.
That sidewalk piece feels particularly important to me with the location being right on a bus line, just because people are going to have to be walking around right outside of there all the time.
I think our staff, hearing Mr. Todd's concerns, I think our staff has suggested, I don't know, Lou, or Angie, I don't know who wants to take this conversation, because we have heard that the sidewalk on Fourth Avenue is an important piece. And following through with our ordinance requirements would be something important to this council, so.
Right. So we did look at the specifics of the concerns as it related to understanding that the sidewalk needed to extend beyond the railroad corridor. We do believe that we have right-of-way along Fourth Avenue for that entirety and that the sidewalk can be placed within that right-of-way. What we would suggest is that with a minor modification allowance that should that right-of-way narrow at any point that from the eight feet, that could be reduced to our standard sidewalk of five feet at or beyond the railway itself. So, but we believe that, looking at that, everything is in place to facilitate the construction of the sidewalk and can work to do that. I don't know, Angie? And I chatted about this. I don't know if you have anything that you would want to add.
Just that, just that if we took a cursory look at the property boundaries for the building supply, and it goes to the edge of the right-of-way, and so it would appear that there is a fence that is encroaching in the right-of-way. Their property boundary doesn't go up to the edge of the pavement. And so, there's the same amount of right-of-way there as there is on the other side of the road, you know, to fit the sidewalk. And so, if not, Lou, under his authority as community development director, could do a minor modification to help adjust the sidewalk to fit within the, you know, within the space given. But I don't think it would encroach on private property.
Okay. Thank you. Has Mr. Todd heard this before right now?
Yes.
Okay.
This is a simple answer to your question, Councilwoman Simpson. Everything I would say is contingent, in all fairness, upon a vote of the Board of Commissioners, because I will take any conditions that I may tentatively agree to back to them for final approval. That's where my authority frankly ends this evening. I think for the purpose of the sidewalk, hearing that it is something that this council feels very strongly about, what I would ask is that we place a condition where we jointly work, similar to what your attorney has said, to ensure that there is an ADA path. If there's not an ability to meet an ADA standard, that we have some amount of administrative authority within your staff to resolve that, to resolve that problem. But that's assuming an ADA standard can't be met, and we just need to be able to investigate that more. But we're happy to try to work through that if this board feels comfortable with that amount of flexibility and opportunity.
Mr. Todd, not to put you on the spot, but there's been similar situations in the past where commissioners had put, at the dais, had put demands on the city, and the city has accepted and moved forward with it. So just want to make that go on the record and remind you of that, so.
Absolutely. And as I said, I'm generally here and happy to accept. I just feel that I have to take things back to my board if I need for them to weigh upon. But we've consulted, and if there is an ability to work with the city to create some amount of administrative leeway to meet an ADA standard and try to work through that, we'll try to find a result that sufficiently does that.
It seems like relatively minor concession, considering that we would be going 50% beyond our maximum height limit if we say yes to this. That's a pretty big concession. So I think a little consideration for a sidewalk. Would like them to think seriously about that as our ask. Anything else?
Mr. Todd, is, are, do you guys intend on preserving the Wonka Vader?
What I believe Councilwoman Mayor Protim Hensley is alluding to, and correct me if I'm wrong, is the elevator located outside of the exterior staircase on what we would call the 95 Building. The simple answer to your question is actually, is no. It will be removed. And the more complex answer to your question is actually the staircase in their entirety is intended to be removed. One thing that we have done with our design team is that we want there to be a focal point and an entry point to this building. The stairs today, not dissimilar to other places, are not the secured entrance for which we wish people to move through. That's locked. The removal of the stairs is twofold. It removes confusion about where the front door of the building will be as well as gets rid of just a security concern that we've had for why those doors are secure at this time. There will be balcony space that will be preserved up there that we'll have in the future.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I mean, the mayor brought it up, but the height is a concern. I understand the need for the space in the building, and I understand why it's being done. I guess my concern is, does it open us up for a precedent of allowing other buildings of this size? Or is there something? Because it's a judicial building and it's a government building you could stand on. Because, I mean, to be really honest, if a private developer was coming in here and asking us to do this, we probably would laugh them all out of the room. So I guess I'm just worried about setting the precedent.
So I don't think you're setting a legally binding precedent. I do think you are changing the character of downtown to where different-sized buildings will be compatible. You know, when you look at compatibility with the neighborhood, it could change the scape. But it is not a legally binding precedent, because this is a legislative decision that you're making.
And all future ones would be case by case, just like this one, right?
They would.
Any further questions?
I think they've done a good job of trying to stair-step. I mean, we are 30 years out essentially from where they started with this courthouse. And I know that they are bursting at the seams. I know that court and, which is a very important part of our local governing abilities, are really impeded in that building right now. And so, this is a very necessary project, and I know that it hasn't been taken lightly. I know that they've been at this for a very long time. I appreciate the architectural features of, you know, starting out and kind of stair-stepping the building. And, you know, it's going to be a building that represents our county for another 40 and 50 years. And so, I understand the height is a lot, but I also understand that it is a focal point for our judicial branch and our local governments and just the ability to carry out business in our community. So I understand why it is the size that it is.
I guess the only thing I'm unclear on now is the sidewalk condition. Are we putting some sort of language in here, or? Don't really know if I want to do it on good faith. I'm going to be really honest. Well, we're not sure that it...
So the condition on the site plan is the fee in lieu
Right.
that was proposed by the county. So there is the staff-proposed condition, which is just to construct the sidewalk. I think what we've discussed is that, understanding that constructing the sidewalk may have some ADA impacts, just wanted to clarify that I have, under the zoning ordinance, the administrative authority to flex that, and that would be a component that we would just staff condition with the recognition that if there were ADA issues, the zoning administrator could use the authority granted in the ordinance to allow a minor modification.
You couldn't do away with it. You could only approve a slight adjustment or slightly smaller, slightly smaller in width.
Okay, so then, under number two, we would be saying that they would be constructing the sidewalks? And if there were any modifications that needed to be done, then the zoning administrator could do that? Do you want to say all that?
You don't have to say that. That's built into the ordinance. The staff-proposed condition is what you would include. And then, just by default, they'll have to bring it across the railroad, is what I'm understanding, under the ADA, to be ADA compliant? Because their property boundary goes to the center of the railroad? Is that what I understand? So they can't stop it in the middle?
Right, right.
And so, by default, they would have to extend it just under the ADA, under the ADA. So I think staff's proposed condition would be the condition.
Anything else? Could you put the staff's condition back up? So in case you wanted to include it in the motion, you can read it regarding the sidewalk. And understanding that, of course, a conditional zoning is only effective after it's been signed off on by the applicant. So Mr. Todd can still take it back to his county commissioners to see if they will authorize that to be signed off on. If not, I guess it would have to come back.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that, yeah, it would not go forward if...
They don't sign it?
If they decided not to do it, then they would have to come back to the city council to decide if you, so that would delay the project, so.
Okay. I guess I open myself up to read this. I'll read anything else. Madam Mayor, I move City Council adoption ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Hendersonville, changing the zoning designation of the subject property pin 9568-97-1859 from PID Planned Institutional Development to PID CZD Planned Institutional Development Conditional Zoning District for the construction of a 90,859 square-foot courthouse at 53,443 square-foot detention center based on the master site plan and list of conditions submitted by and agreed to by the applicant dated 3/6/25 and presented at this meeting and subject to the following. The development shall be consistent with the site plan, including the list of applicable conditions contained therein and the following permitted uses, public and quasi-public buildings. Permitted uses and applicable conditions presented on the site plan shall be amended to include the project shall extend their sidewalks along Fourth Avenue within the railroad right-of-way up to their, well, I guess past their property line. The sidewalk will maintain the same Park Street design of an eight-foot-wide concrete sidewalk and two-foot-wide utility planting strip as the existing sidewalk along this property frontage on Fourth Avenue. The petition is found to be consistent with the city of Hendersonville June H. 2045 Concrete The petition is found to be consistent with the city of Hendersonville Gen H 2045 comprehensive plan based on the information from the staff analysis and the public hearing and because the petition is consistent with a range of goals, guiding principles, and the future land use designation of chapter four of the Gen H comprehensive plan. Furthermore, we find this petition to be reasonable and in the public interest based on the information from the staff analysis, public hearing, and because this expansion would give the county the additional space needed to improve operational efficiency and enhance the services currently provided to its citizens, the proposed expansion of the detention center and courthouse builds upon a longstanding use established as this site for over three decades. And expanding the courthouse is a long-term investment in the community, ensuring that the infrastructure is capable of handling future needs without requiring another expansion in the near future.
Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of the conditional use of zoning district, uh, as amended, um, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Eyes have it, motion carries and we can tell the commissioners they can move forward.
Just briefly want to thank the council for their review. Uh, I recognize that this is a hard project. It will change, uh, but I appreciate your review of it, knowing that this really is a part of history for which a courthouse will stand, uh, that you will be a part of. So thank you.
Another public hearing. Go ahead. Introduce it as they leave. Uh, standard rezoning, LBH Property Holdings LLC.
Yes, so, uh, yes, we have a standard rezoning on Upward Road. The current zoning district is Henderson County Community Commercial, and, uh, this is a staff initiated rezoning, um, and we are proposing commercial highway mixed use or CHMU. It's not working. Okay, it's working now. Um, so, uh, as I mentioned, this is a staff initiated, uh, initial zoning. So the property was annexed into the city at the February city council meeting. The property owner did not request a zoning district and so therefore the city has proposed CHMU and initiated the zoning. Uh, it's a very small parcel. It's .08 acres and, uh, here are some property photos or site photos. Um, as you can see, it's a vacant property. Uh, there is a pond. It's not on the property. It's near the property. Um, and as I mentioned, it is on Upward Road. Um, so, uh, the property was excluded from the analysis that went into the comprehensive plan future land use map. And so therefore it's not categorized, uh, as anything on the map. However, in the immediate adjacent properties, uh, there are mixed use commercial as well as multi-generational living, institutional and family neighborhood living. Because it wasn't classified, staff has included in your motion, the amendment of the future land use map to classify the parcel as mixed use commercial. And, um, also because it wasn't classified, staff, uh, did choose to analyze it as mixed use commercial, given the surrounding properties. Um, and staff found it consistent with the comprehensive plan. I'm not going to go through all of those different things because of the size of the property. Um, so, but we did find it consistent. The adjacent parcels, uh, the directly adjacent parcel was recently rezoned CHMU. And as you can see, um, all of the surrounding properties that are within the city are CHMU. It was established in 2011 for the express purpose of rezoning properties along Upward Road. So I have a, uh, well, planning board recommended this for approval with, uh, the comprehensive plan consistency statement and then, um, this reasonableness statement. And then I also provided a rationale for denial. And I can answer any questions.
Any questions? I assume the property owner is not here to make any comments?
Uh, I don't believe the property owner is here.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance?
Yes, Mayor, it has.
Okay, we have, no one who's signed up to speak. Is there anyone online?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Close that public hearing. Okay. Discussion or a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move the city council adopt an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Hendersonville, changing the zoning designation of the subject property pins 9577-89-9886 from Henderson County CC to City of Hendersonville Central Highway Mixed Use and designating the future land use classification as mixed use commercial based on the following. The petition is found to be consistent with the city of Hendersonville Gen H comprehensive plan based on the information from the staff analysis and because the proposed zoning of CHMU aligns with the Gen H 2045 comprehensive plan, future land use and conservation map and the character area designations in the area adjacent to the subject parcel. Furthermore, we find this petition to be reasonable and in the public interest based off the following information. It is one, a commercial highway mixed use. Is the zoning district established for Upper Road Planning Area? And two, the commercial highway mixed use zoning district is well suited to achieve the goals of the comprehensive plan for this area.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of this standard rezoning for LBH Property Holdings, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Eyes have it. Take care of that little jab of property. Okay, and our last public hearing, a zoning text amendment for the Board of Adjustment quorum adjustment.
Yes, so, um, this is a staff initiated text amendment, um, and it's primarily dealing with section 10 dash one and 10 dash six of our zoning ordinance that outlines the total number of members of the Board of Adjustment as well as how many people are needed to issue a variance, which is, um, one of the main roles of the Board of Adjustment, a very important role. Um, and this was, um, initiated by staff primarily, um, out of a recognized need to, um, address the trend in decreasing board membership, um, and participation over the years. And so we feel that these, um, will help us get a quorum easier, um, without of course lessening the, the, um, ability of them to do their job in, uh, an appropriate way. So, um, to dive into the changes, um, what we ultimately did was decrease the total number of members from 10 members, which is currently is to five mem- members, um, which is the minimum number allowed by state legislation. The, um, board also encompasses, um, the ED, ETJ. So we have, uh, split it so that we have four regular members from the city and then one member from the ETJ. And then we've also included alternates. So, um, we've also split this the same way. Four members from the city, one from the ETJ. So total, we have 10 people. However, there are only five true regular members and then five alternates who could also serve as a regular member if need be. Um, the other major change that we did was, um, to change the number of members who needed, who are needed to vote for a variance. Um, currently it's seven, so if we change the total number of members, we're not going to be able to have seven. Um, we changed it in line with state legislation as well, which, um, says at least four fifths of the members. So out of those five, we would need four members present to vote for a variance. Um, ideally we would have five there and, um, they would need four fifths of those five people to be granted their variance. Uh, so these are the current members of the board. Um, I know you all just appointed some of these, I think it last month or the month before. Um, and so we have basically outlined, uh, what position they would be in now. So, um, as you can see, we have several who are regular and then several alternate members, um, in the amended status. Um, everyone can stay on the board though, which, uh, is important and we actually still have one vacancy. Um, as for the county, there are three members here. As I mentioned before, we are only having one regular and then one alternate. Um, however, one of those members is rolling off, uh, in June, I believe. So, uh, staff doesn't think that this will be an issue, uh, moving forward, so. Um, and when, if you were to approve this, um, we, we consulted with legal and the ordinance would reappoint these members to these positions. So you would not have to go through and reappoint all of these people. Um, so generally, I'm not going to go through all of this. We found it to be, uh, really not applicable for a lot of the comprehensive plan goals. Um, but overall, you know, found it to be consistent with, um, just streamlined government processes and making sure that we can operate on a time, in a timely manner for applicants. Um, we, uh, did take this to our legislative committee, um, as well as planning board. And, um, I have a draft consistency statement here and then a draft rationale for approval and denial. And I can answer any questions.
Questions? Okay, thank you. All right. Um, Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes, Mayor, it has.
Okay. Okay.
I'll keep it brief. Thank you. Lynn Williams, Chadwick Avenue. So just one thing that's a little concerning for me is like, uh, this is supposed to be a checks and balances. So the Board of Adjustment, checks and balances. Right now you've got three planning board members on the Board of Adjustment. It only takes four in order to have a vote. There's one current vacancy. So I guess I'm just thinking maybe consider putting a max of how many planning board members can be on the Board of Adjustment? No more than three maybe? Because otherwise there's no checks and balances. It's just, so that was my concern is, you know, having a little bit of discernment between the boards. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone online wishing to?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. All right, we close this public hearing. Counsel? Discussion? Motion? Who's turn is it?
It's not my turn, I'm done.
Madam Mayor, I move city council adopt an ordinance amending the official city of Hendersonville zoning ordinance, section 10 dash one, establishment of Board of Adjustments and qualifications of members, section 10 dash six, quorum and voting, section 10 dash eight dash two, preliminary site plan, and section 10 dash eight dash three, evidentiary hearings on applications for special use permits based on the following. Petition is found to be consistent with the city of Hendersonville's Gen H 2045 comprehensive plan based on the information from staff analysis and the public hearing and because the petition aligns with the city's adopted plan's policy guidance to provide efficient government services. We find this petition in conjunction with recommendations presented by staff to be reasonable and in the public interest based on the information from staff analysis and the public hearing and because changing the number of members on the Board of Adjustments will assist with ensuring applications will be heard in a timely manner.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of the zoning text amendment for the Board of Adjustment quorum adjustment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Eyes have it. Get that taken care of then. Thank you. Appreciate that and hope that they'll be able to operate more efficiently. All right, we are down to new business. Uh, first is a Rotary Club request to install a peace pole at Lennox Park.
Uh, Mayor Vol, members of city council, uh, Lynn Morris could not join us tonight, so if you don't mind, I'll just, uh, go through her letter. Uh, the request from the Rotary Club, it's the goal of the Rotary Club to, um, install a large number of peace poles around our country. Uh, the idea of what the thing made peace prevail on the earth. They are looking for locations. Um, they wanted to do one, um, the club wanted to do one very close to the Acoustic Trail. Uh, the closest public property, uh, would be Lennox Park. And so they made the request to install a peace pole, which would be similar to the one that we have outside of city hall. We also, I think, believe have one at Patton Park. So their request would be to put one at Lennox Park.
Any discussion? Or a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move the city council approve the placement of a Rotary peace pole at Lennox Park on Southwood Street.
Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of approving the request from the Rotary Club, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Eyes have it and, uh, let them go ahead and look on that project. All right, now, medical insurance plan selection. Mr. Pauli.
Madam Mayor, members of city council, I don't have a presentation tonight, but, uh, we do have for your consideration the selection of our, uh, new medical plan provider. After continued due diligence and further work from staff, uh, John and myself believe that the CPAC Blue Cross option is the best option for the city of Hendersonville, especially based on its capacity as a health and old insurance provider, which we would have board membership on and have a little bit more control and flexibility over what, uh, happens to our plan moving forward. Um, so with that, I'd be happy to take any other questions, uh, council may have about the bid responses.
We did see all of this information earlier, so.
Yeah, so it was presented at your meeting last week.
Yeah, and I did confirm with Brian today that the coverages would remain mostly the same as long as providers except Blue Cross.
Blue Cross and that are providers that will be the most available.
Because we do have some coverages now that I would hate for us to go back on, given that a lot of our employees are probably able to use services now that they didn't have access to before.
Okay. Any discussion or a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move the city council adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to negotiate a contract with the firm submitting the best overall proposal for the city's health insurance plan.
Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of the resolution regarding the city's health insurance plan, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Eyes have it. Move forward with that. Uh, city manager report.
Mayor Vol, members of the city council, your, uh, March contingency and adjustment report is included in your packet for your information and, um, I think I, I thought I had reported it.
Awesome. Appreciate you. Uh, council comments? Anyone have anything?
I'm going to be really quick because I know that we all want to go home. Um, Lou and I participated in a meeting earl, was it this week? Earlier this week? Was that yesterday? Sorry. Um, anyways, with our downtown staff and some folks from out of state, um, that are involved with small business incubators, um, and they were working on the feasibility of us to do some stuff here in our community. And I have to say, it was a really fun discussion to be a part of and I think that there's going to be some really cool stuff that comes out of that and for us to be able to help on corridors in our community. It's exciting.
Okay. All right. Anyone?
Just a few questions. Um, with that, um, Gen H plan, it is open for minutes. All sorts of things in it.
Well, I think it's always. We're at the end of our agenda.